Is it, is it not till the weekend? Oh, I'm really on the mic now.
Okay. I'm Bill Anderson, a member of the Budget Committee and Acting Chair of the Budget Committee as of a couple moments ago. Please, let's kick off this meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And Tom, do you want to take over?
Thank you, Bill. So as we discussed at the December mid-year Budget Committee meeting, we're doing our preliminary budget hearing with the Health Services Department as we've done the last several years. This year, I believe, we're only scheduled for one meeting as opposed to the two that we've done in the past. So health is prepared to provide the broad background of current issues. And it's been quite a year for our Health Services Department. They've been outstanding in every way in responding to the crisis that our community is facing with the pandemic. So then that will color their, some of their budget issues that we discussed this morning. But so again, this is our only preliminary meeting. Once we adjourn today, then next meeting will be our traditional budget hearing week, which will begin the Tuesday after Memorial Day, which I believe is the first week in June this year. So unless any of the Budget Committee members have any preliminary things that they'd like to say, I'll pause for that. And then once, if there are any, then we'll turn it over to, it looks like Dr. Conway is online to kick us off.
I'll make a statement. Yeah, I do appreciate taking time to do this outside the Budget Committee week. So this is health. Health is a big dynamic department in Deschutes County, and it's really valuable to take some time and really get some brain space around this. You know, it can feel like we're shoehorning a whole lot in during a four-day session when we're doing our budget. So this is a very valuable time together today.
Hey, it looks like George, you're up.
Thanks. Good morning, Commissioners. Correcting my text, Acting Budget Committee Chairman Anderson. Budget Committee members, Tom Anderson, Greg Monn, and other senior county staff. Thanks for, Dan Emerson for helping get us set up here, too. For the record, I'm George Conway, Health Services Director. I will keep this brief. One year ago today, there had been less than 35,000 COVID-related deaths recorded in the USA. As of this Tuesday, that number is 564,000. So more than half a million Americans have succumbed to COVID during this last year, and over 30 million Americans infected with this virus. This pandemic has highlighted material weaknesses in our society and in our health and emergency response systems. The disproportionate suffering during this national crisis by the elderly, workers deemed essential enough to be required to work, and racial and ethnic minorities reveal gaping holes in our public health systems. COVID-19 has highlighted the interdependence of the public health and the economy. Strong public health is good for the economy, and weak public health infrastructure may invite further catastrophe when a pandemic or emergency occurs. The economic and educational havoc caused by the commercial and economic shutdowns have jeopardized many people's livelihoods and sense of well-being, increasing the need for crisis and intensive behavioral health services. Moving forward, we will need to build resilience in our department, ensuring permanent core expertise and preparing for future pandemics and emergencies. Doing so will require us to engage with the public and continue to earn trust. We also need to recognize that social and economic factors often determine health outcomes. The most effective way to maximize societal gains may be through integrating health-promoting approaches in public enterprises, such as development, transportation, and housing. Administrative services are integral to the delivery of services and programs and act as the solid, concrete foundation supporting our two direct service areas. These necessary tools always need to be in our toolbox and readily available. Unfortunately, administrative staffing levels have not kept pace with the growth of our population and its service needs. And you'll hear more about that during the presentations. Our health service organization and colleagues' performance also really highlight some of our great strengths. During this protracted crisis, full advantage has been made of our combined public health and behavioral health organization with very productive collaboration across service areas to support, even sustain, our clientele and communities. Our colleagues have worked long and hard to contain contagion, calm the anxious, and immunize at a rapid pace, one that sets an example for other counties and the state. We could not have responded to this crisis without all the people, working parts, and programs in the department coming together to support the incident command system, all the while providing exceptional continuity of key services. We look forward to sharing our programs and plans with you today and to your questions. The order of our presentations will be the same as the introductions I'll make now. So first, Cheryl Smallman, who has provided very astute financial guidance and leadership. And we'll talk about our broad administrative group. Christopher Wyler is very busy being ICS Commander, so Cheryl will cover that entire territory. Janice Gersoz has kept a steady hand on behavioral health and also a very important role in ongoing broad continuity for health services. role in ongoing broad continuity for health services functionality during COVID-19. And then Nahad Sadr Azodi, Public Health Director, who's been here exactly a year now, just over a year, arrived at an interesting time. He's been very diligent in his first year. This will be his first budget season as the primary proponent and presenter of public health. So I'll turn it over to Cheryl. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Conway. I'm going to see if we can get the PowerPoint launched. Fantastic. So, good morning. As Dr. Conway mentioned, I'm Cheryl Smallman. I'm the Business Officer for Health Services. And as to be expected, we have a pretty full agenda today. The entire intent of today's meeting is to provide information so that you are fully aware of the issues, the requests, and the background information to make decisions come June. So to that end, I want to make sure we address your questions fully and comprehensively, while also acknowledging that we have limited time. While we enjoy discussing health services, I want you to know we're happy to have additional meetings, but I'll also kindly try to identify if we should move along, or if you want to stay on a specific topic, just let me know. We'd like to spend more time. So. First, we'll talk about fiscal year '21, kind of look at that and review some accomplishments, as well as observations. We'll then think about how that leads into the next three years. We're currently undergoing a new strategic plan, so I'd like to talk briefly about that. We then will talk about fiscal year '22, and at a high level, talk about the requested budget. And then we'll dive into the service areas, the key policy decisions and special requests that will be before you come June. Then we can wrap up with a summary and any additional discussion that you might have or like to have. In addition to the presentation, you each should have a budget binder. We usually provide that in June. We're, we're hoping that this provides an additional level of transparency and clarity, while also acknowledging there's a lot of information here. We won't be going through each section, but just, I'd like to orient you to what's inside. Should you like to look at that or have additional questions, we're happy to answer any of it. In your front pocket, you will have a Behavioral Health Terminology and Acronym Sheet. That is because we are fully acknowledging we use acronyms a lot. We are going to do our best to avoid that, but we may not. It may just inherently come out. So this is a handy-dandy sheet for you to reference should we trip up. You also have the slides, should you like to follow along, make notes. In the back pocket, you'll have a one-page handout. It's green. It's big. This outlines all of our special requests. It looks at, it prioritizes it, so we'll be referencing that as it's integrated, all service areas. So we'll be able to reference that. It talks about the FTE that's associated, as well as the cost and the requested fiscal year '22 funds, and then has additional funding in the source of funds on the far-right column. So we'll be referencing that. It's probably a good one to keep out in case you want to mark that up or have questions. Now, in the meat of the binder, you have six sections. The first is the budget narrative, as, just as reference. The second is the annual report. This is the first year we're providing the annual report. It outlines each service area, each program, gives a high-level overview of the intent of that program, performance metrics, and then FTE, or any changes that you can expect in the budget or program. Section three provides the high-level department financials. We have three funds, and we've provide a, provided a roll-up, because I believe you haven't received the requested budget line items, so this will be something that we'll, we'll reference throughout. Section four is the program-level financials. It also includes my personal favorite page, which is, if you've got really great eyes, a roll-up of all programs compared to fiscal year '21, and then the requested budget. So a lot of information there, including FTE. And behind that, our program-level financials, so you can look at the requested budget, as well as how each one is funded. Section five has a listing of grants, as well as what we're projecting to expend on those grants in fiscal year '21. And section six includes the entire regional health improvement plan. So, a lot of information. We'll walk through some of that today, and if at any time you get lost, please don't hesitate to ask, where, where are we? So, any questions? So fiscal year '21, a year in review. Here are some, some accomplishments. In public health, they investigated more than 5,000 communicable disease, or STI, sexually transmitted infections cases. Now, this alone is a 296% increase from the year before. Obviously, COVID is playing a role in that, but it speaks to the scope and scale at hand of the communicable disease efforts. Another accomplishment is that the Women Infant and Children's Program undertook a biennial review by the Oregon Health Authority and received a 98%, making it one of the top programs in the state. So, quite the accomplishment. Behavioral health, we opened the Deschutes County Stabilization Center, offering a 24-hour service. That was supported by two, three major funding sources. The Deschutes County Sheriff's Office, the Central Oregon Health Council, as well as a $2.4 million Impax grant. So that's been quite, quite significant for our community. There were also, yes, Mike.
And the Impact Grant?
Impax Grant. It's an acronym. Do you remember what it stands for?
It's from the Justice Department.
It is a, it's a Justice Department grant.
No, it's, it's not ongoing. It is what, we are one of the pilots, and then we actually got half a million from Central Oregon Health Council. So, and that was a one-time grant, too.
Correct.
So one-time grants go away, where's the money coming from?
That's the million-dollar question.
Well, there are some.
It's actually a $3 million question.
Whatever.
Correct.
It's a $3 million question, and I know probably Central Oregon Health Council is really happy. You know, we've seen over 1,000 people there. It is really making a difference. So, you know, that, we're getting annually, you know, what is it? By, every six months, I think we're getting a really good report from Holly on what's happening.
I'm not questioning the success. I just, and I was under the impression that, when this first started, that the City of Bend was going to contribute.
They, they did a bit.
They did what?
They did a little bit. I mean, I thought they would come up.
70,000.
70.
And then they quit.
And they didn't up it. And then Holly went to them, asking them for more funding, and they did not.
So we're stuck for the bag now.
Well, so may I just.
I think they promised.
Wait in a little bit here. It's, it's possible that the, it's possible, Mr. Meyer, that the, that the Impax grant will be provided to us again. So it's a grant stream that we may have the opportunity to apply for again. That frequently happens. The City of Bend has signaled willingness to consider additional dollars for this project. And I'll be talking a little bit about the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic effort and the ongoing sustained support for that, and how that may offer some options. And then we'll have to continue to look for funding for this project. It's just the reality of a project this size.
That won't come into play in this budget, though. It's future.
That will not come to play in this budget, but you will see some hallmarks of that in the special requests.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could also just say, to speak to the City of Bend question, I think that asking the City of Bend, and maybe the City of Redmond, and maybe St. Charles, to contribute to the stabilization center, the long-term 24/7 operation of the stabilization center, those requests would be stronger if we demonstrated a core general fund foundational investment in the stabilization center. So that's kind of, you know, again, not, not for this budget cycle, but what's something to think about moving forward. I, I really think that we would have more leverage with our requests if we demonstrate a, a general fund investment, you know, core general fund investment of our own.
Would you think that should come from the Sheriff's Department?
Yes.
Yes.
What is it? District two is countywide, or is it the other way around?
One of the most countywide.
So District two.
Two is one. Or countywide is one.
So District one, countywide, being the whole county, would share, and it would be the appropriate place?
Yes, and, I mean, the stabilization center helps us basically, you know, it, it helps the Sheriff's Office reduce, you know, reduce the staff hours that it's, that it's.
Oh, I understand, Bill. I think it probably has more impact in the City of Bend PD than the Sheriff.
But the stabilization center is not just, it's not just a, a part of our law enforcement system. It's also, I mean, there are people who go to the stabilization center who are not mixed up with law enforcement, who just need some respite because they're having a mental health crisis. So, you know, that seems to me that that fits squarely in the behavioral health divisions.
I was just trying to narrow down where the appropriate place to draw funds would be, maybe a combination of District one, and then the monies we're not levying from the county property tax. Wouldn't we have a 6% spread there, or 6 cent spread? And that is, again, shares the burden financially throughout the county.
So currently, just in case it's helpful, 20% of the clients served in the stabilization center were law enforcement drop-offs. So, just gives you a sense of the scale. 80% are coming to us some other way, although they could potentially have had law enforcement contact without our presence.
Thank you.
Yeah.
In section five, can you point out the Impax grant?
Sure. It is the first page, fifth one down, Criminal Justice Commission. Wait, oh, that's a lie. Sorry.
That's the co-responder grant. Uh, no, sorry. That's, we have two justice grants.
It's one of those, yeah.
Eight program here.
And Impax, by the way, stands for Improving People's Access to Community-Based Treatment, Supports, and Services. That is a long acronym. Handy that it ended up saying Impax, but that's what it stands for.
Not on the sheet here, is it?
It's not on the sheet, sir. You are correct. Eagle eyes. Next time, it will be on the sheet.
All right.
Well, yeah, that's the first thing I thought of, is, you know, which line item is that? So it'd be interesting to be able to.
So it's really not listed here?
It's on the, it's under state grant. So in the future, maybe I'll add a, an index here, but on the last page, second to last page of the grants, it is for fiscal year '21, the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. So the third one up from local government payments. Improving people's access to community-based treatment, supports, and services in the crisis program. In fiscal year '21, we anticipate expending $540,000 of that grant.
Yeah, so, you know, maybe the acronym in brackets, because that's what I was looking for.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Good questions. Also to note that Behavioral Health received a $4 million substance abuse mental health services administration system of care grant. Which seeks to expand services to our seriously mentally ill youth and families, and to basically close the gap in services. In administrative services, we've implemented a number of systems to support telehealth, as well as connect with our clients in real time. Both of these have been significant lifts on the technological side and are worth, worth noting. And what makes these accomplishments ever more impressive is that it was amidst COVID. To give you a sense of scale, we've received $5.8 million in fiscal year '21 alone to address COVID. We anticipate expending $4 million of that this fiscal year, so 1.8 million will carry forward into fiscal year '22, with more on the horizon as we receive additional information from the state, as well as the federal government. We've logged over 18,000 hours of staff time while maintaining services. In partnership with community agencies, we've established a mass vaccination site and call center, has the capacity of administering 12,000 vaccines per week. And as of March 31st, 2021, 36% of the population is vaccinated or in process. So significant.
Can you give the number today? Because it, it seems like we're, I think it was like 62%, I mean, of first and second, because with even the first, they get 90-some percent immune, you know, help. Do we have that number?
In our presentation yesterday, it was about 39%.
But it's actually, I did it, it was like up to 60-some. We are saying 122 for our herd, 122,000. So we're, we're quite a bit up there. According to John Hopkins, you don't need both shots in order to have some immunity.
We'll get you those numbers, Ms. Sharon.
Thanks.
And with it, it being the pandemic and the health services efforts, we've had three main observations. We've been able to kind of summarize it in that. The first is just the inadequate support infrastructure we currently have in place. Obviously, COVID pandemic has required an immense amount of medical expertise, but also in return, in support of logistics, collaboration, processes, communication, technology, it's been a huge lift. We continue to receive requests for support from our administrative services, and at this point, we'll talk more about this, but we're really quite thin and trying to maintain it all. The second is that this year, Behavioral Health experienced a dramatic reduction in psychiatric beds and housing options for the community's most mentally ill clients. And this has caused a additional pressure on our crisis and intensive teams as they work to maintain these clients no longer at the, in psychiatric care facilities, but in the community. And third, nationally even, we've identified the gaping holes in public health, and Dr. Conway spoke to that at the beginning, and really speaks to the historical unfunded public health infrastructure that we currently have in place. And Nahad will speak more about that in just a little bit. So looking ahead, we, our strategic plan ends this fiscal year. So we're in the current drafting process, and through our lessons learned and observations through the year, it's really driving how we're looking at the next three years. And we're, we're needing to be agile and flexible. And through that, our, we've identified two overarching, simple goals. The first is to improve outcomes, and by that, we mean that we're going to make a commitment to demonstrate meaningful impact for our community. The second is that we need to increase sustainability. And through that, we mean we're going to enhance public trust, and we're going to create resiliency, both in our workforce and financially. So you'll see this as a common thread throughout our special requests. Everything is aligning to these overarching goals. You'll also notice a common theme of COVID. It's had a significant impact on our community, and as you can imagine, health services and where we'll be going in the next three years. Yes, Mike?
How do you measure meaningful impact?
Well, I think.
You know you don't have it now.
We do know that we have meaningful impact now, because there are a lot of very concrete, practical things that we do measure. In your tab, under number two, is our annual report. And in that report, you'll see for each program area, there are metrics for performance that we have worked really hard, and my staff will tell you, we work really hard to say, "So you're counting X? What does that mean? Does it actually mean that when taxpayers give us money?" Does it actually mean that when taxpayers give us money to do this work, the outcome is that people's lives are improved in some meaningful way that we can demonstrate? That's the direction we're headed. We try to tie every single thing we do to a measure that says, what you're doing is resulting in meaningful change that you're supposed to be changing, so.
There will be some metrics to say 28% or 31%.
Yes, yes. Yep.
And just to add on to that a little bit, while we are doing a really remarkable job of measuring impact in pockets, we believe we can do a better job of making that information accessible in order to analyze exactly what the impact has been and replicate those things that are working well. So that's part of that initiative.
So back on a bullet point, increased sustainability, I guess it's kind of a vision. So this is the main bullet point for the next strategic plan. And as I say, my observation is, health department is dynamic. You know, federal government, state grants, and service levels that are, you know, funded from the state. And my point is, in the concept of Deschutes County, we are a growing county, we do have resources. And, you know, our level of government, referring to, you know, the people's government, we're going to be here for the long run. So I just, you know, kind of resolving the concept of, we, the health department, want to be sustainable, but we, Deschutes County, know that we're going to invest appropriately in, you know, health needs. So I guess I'd like to try to get over that hump of the worry of the health department. You know, I mean, it's just dynamic. It is always dynamic. So, you know, I mean, we're going to have a health department, it's going to be funded appropriately relative to the annual discussion for the rest of time, you know, so I mean, let's just be careful with what does increased sustainability mean. And in partnership, you know, all of us.
Yep.
Maybe I can, does this work?
Yeah, I agree with you, Commissioner, and I think you'll see in my presentation, I based it on the discussions we've had around this issue. And I think another maybe word that really captures our thought or my thought pattern around this is around predictability. So making sure that the funding and the program design, everything related to it, has some predictability to it so that we can deliver the best results possible.
And I know it kind of comes down to the concept of, I've been hired as a, you know, temporary position because of a grant, or we have a great service, we think it's doing great work in the community, but it's not funded more than annually. So I mean, just reducing some of that anxiety, you know, let's not go into it thinking we need to be that anxious. I mean, because obviously, there's growth in Deschutes County, you know, and this is a point in time, you know, maybe someday in the future, we'll be looking at declining, but at this point, I mean, it's growth. So it's just optimizing our investments is my thought.
I have a quick question. So relative, I get that because of COVID response and all of that, it put terrible strains, you know, across the board on that. And so it really highlights, you know, your points of inadequate support and infrastructure and all of that. Is it realistic, though, and maybe that isn't the intent, to try to fund or create systems for a worst-case scenario like we're at? I wonder if that's sustainable to try to do that? You know, staffing for the busiest time when you're not like that all the time? Even though we presume there will be additional pandemics at some point, I don't know that the organization could afford to stay fully prepared for, you know, at this level, even when that need isn't there.
I believe Dr. Conway wants to.
If I could answer that, I don't think that's what we're describing. We're right now dealing with sort of surge, surge capacity, surge event. So we're not proposing that we maintain the same tempo and draw, basically draw a lot of our employees that would have other day jobs to spend part or much of their time in the pandemic response. But there are key elements that were revealed in the pandemic in staffing that we probably should have stronger, not just respond to pandemics, but also to respond to recurrent outbreaks. Our environmental health staffing isn't, doesn't come close to meeting the FDA standards for staffing. And that means that our pace and frequency of inspections may be diminished by that. So there's a number of things that have been highlighted in this that we believe, and that I think that public health in this sort of autopsy after the pandemic will acknowledge nationally and at state level as well. So we're really not talking about maintaining this surge, extreme distraction, trying to deal with the pandemic as much as making sure that we don't miss the things that caught us short at the beginning of the pandemic. So for example, testing and availability of protective equipment. We're both very, very shy, and some local preparedness would have been important in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do think throughout the course of this presentation for each of the service areas, we've tried to draw a distinction between need that COVID might have shone a light on, but that extends beyond COVID versus our COVID response, which has, you know, lots and lots of temporary activity surrounding it. So I, where we've not done that, please ask us and we'll do our best to delineate.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Could I also just say that, I'll try and get this in closer. Could I also just say that I think that part of sustainability is accomplishing better synergy between federal and state funding and local funding. The, our, our health services department has, you know, known and respected and recognized nationally and at the state level. They are, they have, they're able to be very successful in securing competitive funding. But I would hate for us to reach a point where, where they say, okay, the administrative burdens of chasing, you know, securing and then administering federal or state funds are so, are so burdensome and we don't have enough of the right kind of other money to be able to do that, to do that work, that we're not going to pursue certain things. Because I do, you know, having, having worked in a number of capacities where I've worked with federal and state grants, that's a real thing. If you don't, you know, you can only charge so much indirect. And then if you don't have the additional capacity to make it happen, you don't chase that. You don't chase those funds. And those funds could help you provide critically important services. So one of the things I'm interested in figuring out, and I don't, I don't have any answers, but one of the things I'm interested in figuring out is how do we, how do we structure our general fund investments to support, you know, kind of a, I mean, in the, in the private sector, you know, and in the corporate sector, you know, one of your divisions is performing really well and making tons of sales. You don't, you don't cut their legs out from underneath them during that process. You figure out how to, you know, how to support and, you know, actually incentivize that for them so that they can, they can do that work and continue to grow and be successful and provide services. So just as sort of a framing comment, I wanted to offer that.
Thank you. So let's dive into some budget numbers. At first, a graph. What you have before you here are the resources and expenses for all of the health services funds. On the left is the amount in millions of dollars, and this goes from 2017. And we're forecasting all the way through 2026. The dark gray bar on the bottom are the county general funds over this time, including level from 2000, the requested 2022 through 2026. The light blue are all other government payments that include state, federal, local. The next blue bar is the capitation that we received from Pacific Source. That also includes a fee for service component, so that's included there. The yellow is a very important funding stream that we'd like to highlight and will be a point of conversation throughout today in behavioral health. It is the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Dollars and specifically the Prospective Payment System Funding Mechanism, or PPS for short. It's an important concept that I just want to drill home, that there are two types of funding when it comes to CCBHC. One is this PPS, that is a payment per service model. And the other is a classic grant with a set amount. The yellow here represents PPS. And then the green is the beginning working capital as we're projected out. And so when I was here before you last year, it looked as though we were at a fiscal cliff in fiscal year 22. And this is not the fiscal cliff that we thought we would have at this time, three years ago, two years ago, or even last year. And that is for a variety of reasons, including the additional grant funding that's come in related to COVID, but also this ongoing CCBHC PPS that we've been receiving, we can't count on, haven't been able to expend, and so we've been saving it. So.
Yeah, Cheryl, just a couple of quick questions. So I'm looking at the 2021 graphic here, and I assume that the other government payments, the increase has to do with cares.
Cares as well as federal funds through Oregon Health Authority, COVID-related.
Then can you explain the ups and downs in that funding source in 1920? It's up and down. Is that because it's biennial funding and we receive a lopsided payment at the beginning? And I know there's a lot of components that go in there, but you notice how the other government payments in 19 is significantly more than 20. 21 has to do with COVID. And then it's, there's a declining amount moving forward after 21.
In 2020, one thing to note, we did receive some funding from Central Oregon Health Council that while we received it, it's carrying forward into 2021. So because of the way we have to claim our grant revenue, we can't claim it until it's earned often, depending on the source. So you're going to see some of that shift. In 2020 and 2021 is when we made an effort towards documenting that in a better fashion. So I think that's what you're seeing here.
So instead of contract payments, which might have been the case in 2019, which is not based on an earned grant, in 2020, we shifted to the earned grant, which ends up pushing it out into a fund balance.
Precisely.
Or the future year to earn. Okay.
Precisely. And then it's recorded in that grant line. Yep.
In looking at this graph, am I correct to assume that we're upside down in 2026 to the tune of about $5 million bucks?
Correct.
Because we're spending all of our beginning networking, spending it down.
We.
And so we're going to have a massive, not a massive, a substantial reduction in services or a substantial increase in general fund by 2026.
So two things. The first is that it's actually projected to be around $10 million.
$10 million, okay, I'm sorry, I was off.
So it doesn't help the case. However, this only counts revenue that we know today. And as we've seen, I think, over the course of the last few years, there probably should be a very large asterix on here in that the health services is dynamic. Funding mechanisms change. So while I can't speak to whether or not there would be a large increase in the county general fund request or a reduction in services at that point in time, it would have to be a conversation should nothing change.
Because it's out far enough that it's not going to be a surprise.
Right.
And I think this committee has got to be aware of that. And based upon your best knowledge at this point, you know, I thought that little gap there on the end under 2026 only represented $5 million, but I guess it's $10 million?
Correct.
And so it's $10 million plus the dark blue, no wait, from the general fund, that's the dark one. So we've got to be either reducing costs now to lower that gap or increasing reserves to be able to handle it then.
So.
But we can't say you didn't tell us. You're telling us right now.
And, and just.
I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, and just to point out, this is the story that we've had to tell every single year when we look five years ahead because the reality is, we cannot say for certain we're going to have certain grant streams or CCBHC prospective revenue. I am an optimist. I've done this work for 30 years. And every year, that revenue does manifest in some way, with a couple of exceptions when we've had significant recession events over the course of my years. So while I think it's important for us to tell you that this is the landscape looking ahead, I don't actually believe it's the landscape. I believe that revenue manifests in the form of grant funds, prospective payment, and savings every year. So that's my optimism speaking, but it's held true for literally 31 years of my work in the public sector. So just a sort of balancing way to think about that.
Plan for the worst and hope for the best.
Plan for the worst, hope for the best, and don't be too scared, or you don't do meaningful work. So.
I think this is a great graphic, and it.
It is.
It outlines, to me, the further you go out in the out years, the more uncertainty you have in terms of funding.
Right.
But knowing that the certainty becomes more certain as you roll closer to it.
Yes.
So I'm with you on that $10 million gap. I'd be surprised if that's not filled. And, you know, the expenses could change and other revenue sources could change, but.
Maybe it's only $5 million. What's a couple of million a month?
I think it's a great graphic.
I think Janice's comments are spot on, that this is conservative. It shows it on the expense side as if everything's going to be spent every year, and it won't. We've, we have seen a similar chart to this every year. In fact, in past years, that cliff, as Cheryl said, has been sooner than a number of years out. This, this is further out. So this is probably, even though there's a cliff out there, this is probably one of the more optimistic future charts you'll see with health services in terms of when that quote-unquote D-Day comes. But, but that D-Day always gets pushed out because there are savings, particularly on the labor cost side, because it's, there are so many FTE, there's turnover, and there are savings every single year with that. So that, that green bar, the beginning capital, shows it dwindling over time. But if you look at the history, it's, it tends to be fairly constant in terms of the, that carryover or that cushion projected out. This is, you know, again, a conservative approach, but it frankly is, is optimistic.
Thank you.
I mean, I'd just like to add, if you think about some of our other departments and, and, I mean, looking at this and seeing that we have reasonable expectations of adequate resources for several years out is actually, it is, I mean, to build on what Tom was saying, that looks pretty good to me. I mean, in 2007, did we have any idea what was going to happen to CDD's, you know, permit fee, permit fee revenue imploding? Or, you know, the year before COVID, did we have any idea what was going to happen to the fairgrounds? You know, during the, during the year of COVID. And so, I mean, if you can give me this, you know, four years of predictability, you know, or reasonable assurance that that revenue is going to be there, I think that that's actually great. And then, yeah, that's the appropriate way to look at the 2026 is, you know, there's a, there's a tremendous amount of unknowns that will fall into place before that year that hopefully will.
One of the things to note, too, is that in looking at how big that green is in '21 and '22, and also '23, it looks like financially, COVID's been a pretty good thing for us. Seriously.
I mean, there's been a lot of money.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not saying it's good, but financially it's.
A lot of, yeah, I mean, there's been, you know, a lot of demand for services that, that has been a real scramble and strain, too. So just in terms of volume of money, definitely, sure.
I like to look at the volume part.
Well, then also another observation is, you know, just kind of the, the scope and scale of all expenses and all funds, you know, so we're talking 45 to 50 million or, you know, just general, looking across a line there. But it's good to understand that that. But it's good to understand that that's the, the size of the pie we're talking about here. Right now, there's definitely revenue in that beginning working capital line. So, yeah. It is, it's a great, great graph.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Lana.
Thank you, Lana.
All right, so in the essence of time, I don't want to shortchange this, but I'm going to try and explain this at a high level. Happy to dive into anything more specifically. This is in your binder as well in section three, has the department level financials. This is Fund 270, or the Oregon Health Plan Mental Health Reserves. This is specific to behavioral health. What I want to highlight here is in fiscal year '21, we, when we budgeted, we thought we would end the year with $6 million. As you can see, we are estimating beginning of fiscal year '22 with $12.2 million, and ending fiscal year '22 with $13.8, $13.9 million. So it begs the question, what happened between $6 million, what we thought and what we think now? And a lot of that has to do with that CCBHC PPS that I was talking about earlier. We haven't been able to plan to expend it. As we receive information that it continues, we've been able to charge that, that amount, and it's been going into reserves. So we started fiscal year '21 with $1.4 million more than we thought. Then this year, we're receiving that because it's continued. Actually, we received information that it's continued through September of 2023. So this year, we are anticipating about $2.2 million that's going into our reserves. Oregon Health Plan Membership is up about 20%, so we've been receiving additional funds that were not planned on being expended. So that's going into our reserves at $1.6 million. And then based on savings, we're estimating $865,000 that we thought we'd have to move into our operating fund for this year. We do not need to. So that's how that difference comes to be. Fund 274, or the next page in your binder, this is our operating fund. This is Health Services Fund 274. I'm going to bring your eyes to the very bottom since that is our appropriation. For fiscal year '22, requested budget is $58.6 million, which is an increase of 1% over our '21 revised budget. There are some arrows on the side. In classic health services fashion, some of these we learned will likely change as soon as we submitted this. So the beginning working capital right now is, in the requested budget, is $10 million. We've been working with finance in the Oregon Health Authority for a FEMA reimbursement. I anticipate that that will impact our beginning working capital for fiscal year '22, so just want to make note of that.
So the, when the FEMA reimbursement comes in, it'll be added to our beginning working capital? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yep.
How much?
We just opted in on Wednesday. Yesterday, Tuesday.
Okay, under a million?
Yeah, under a million. Under a million. Yep. Government grants and payments, you'll see a decrease by $2.9 million, $2.8. That's pretty directly correlated to FEMA, or sorry, to COVID expenses or grants coming through Oregon Health Authority. And this should probably be read because we've recently found out that in fiscal year '22, we will be offered $2.9 million in additional COVID funds. So we have yet to see the amendment on that, but that's likely going to change as well. Those funds are to support contact tracing, vaccine distribution, and can be expended through fiscal year '23 and some of it through '24. It's not enough to maintain our current efforts, which is why we're supplementing that with a FEMA reimbursement. Charges for services, you'll see that go down. That primarily relates to the behavioral health program. As Oregon Health Plan Membership has increased, patient fees and insurance has decreased. That's what you can attribute there. The CCBHC PPS, I'm always going to pause because I know it's really confusing. You'll see that has a showing in fiscal year '22 and in previous years did not. Interfund payment goes down by $234,000. We had a contract that is currently going to be paid for the foreseeable future by Pacific Source instead of us. We do not need a Fund 270 transfer into behavioral health to operate it in fiscal year '22, so that's where you see the decrease of $2.3 million or $2.4 million. TRT transfer in, this is a yellow because that is one of the policy decisions before you this year. While it shows a decrease of $109,000, this is specific to environmental health program. It's going to get a little complicated, so bear with me. Last year, you approved a $137,000 one-time transfer in of the TRT funds in addition to converting county general funds to TRT funds to support environmental health.
That's for restaurant inspections, right?
Correct, yep. So while it's a decrease over last year, it is an increase of about $27,000 that we are requesting to maintain current services. And it includes a environmental health rate increase of 1.4%, which is commensurate with the Consumer Price Index. We are proposing that as a strategy moving forward or something to discuss at least this year. Oops.
Can you say 1.4% increase? That's on the, for the fees that are charged to the restaurant?
Correct. Yep. And we are not requesting an increase in county general funds for fiscal year '22. Okay, staffing, high level. Current revised budget has $358.2. The requested budget has $352.8. This includes, there are seven FTE that term this fiscal year. We have a request to extend four of them. In this $352.8 number for fiscal year '22, 33.5 of those and sometime mid-year fiscal year '22. And they're part of our special requests, some of them. So you'll see some continuation. And .4 vacant FTE, we are eliminating. So $352.8 plus some of the special requests are new additions, and we'll walk through that. So. Any questions on the financials before we dive into each service area?
So just the, the term, term.
Yeah.
What is that?
These are limited duration positions that end.
With an end, okay. And then $352.8 plus seven plus 33 and a half?
No, the $352.8 is inclusive of those changes below.
So special requests will be different than that? But special requests are not the seven and 33 and a half?
Good question.
We'll get to it. We'll get to it. Yeah, no, understood, okay.
Yep.
Those limited duration positions, is it, would it be correct to assume that they were grant funded for a specific purpose?
Correct.
And then the grant money is gone?
Correct.
But it was, the grant was taken on the assumption that there's no guarantee it would be picked up?
Correct.
Some of them are also positions we made a decision after two years of grant funding that we didn't need. And so when we reapplied for the grant, we changed what we asked for. That's, those are tough decisions because they involve people, but sometimes we guessed wrong. So we make those changes at the fiscal year or the grant cycle.
And then there, then there are some of these limited duration positions that you learn, you know, wow, this really has a huge impact. And this is, this is sort of an essential function for us, so we want to convert it, figure out a way to convert it to permanent positions.
And that's a lovely foreshadowing for service area special requests. Yeah.
Did you ever find out the other thing? Well, this really didn't.
Yes.
Matter one bit.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the things that Janice just said was that.
But we don't really need these.
We don't need these.
All right.
There's the whole spectrum, limited durations can go to, can go to the rubbish heap or they can go to the.
Okay. Service area overview. Very basic reminder of how health services is comprised. We have the director's office and then three service areas. We have administrative services, behavioral health, and public health. We'll start with administrative services, then go to the director's office, then behavioral health, and public health.
So I've always thought of it as three. So this is the first time I'm seeing it as four or thinking of, you know, this is the budget discussion, so now we're talking four. So just acknowledging that, I've never thought of it as four before.
So administrative services. If you want to follow along, follow along, in your binder, section four has colored tabs that go from top to bottom, red, yellow, blue, and green. We will start with red, which is the very last page of that section.
Oh, can we just make a note for the record that our committee member, Bruce Barrett, is on Zoom?
Oh, great.
There we go.
So when I say administrative services, how many of you have an image that is evoked similar to this? Don't raise your hand, I don't want to know. Perhaps that's how it was back then, even though they're in computers in siloed. This is more representative of how administrative services functions in health services. We are very much integrated in its support for behavioral health and public health. We are co-located for some teams. We communicate on a daily basis. And many of the programs that we have are actually direct service. So for instance, health information technology, compliance, and privacy, I won't go down the list, but, but you get the gist. And at the end of the day, or in reality, we are the tools that help build processes and systems that support the delivery of programs for behavioral health and public health. Now, the issue is that we can't build ongoing solutions that these two service areas rely on with short-term staff. We have two special requests, which we'll talk about. The first seeks to shore up an issue or to shore up that, that consistent demand. And the second seeks to directly solve an issue that we came across in this. So high-level financials. Admin services includes both the people as well as the infrastructure to support the department. So that includes all shared costs of fleet, facilities, softwares, et cetera. We are requesting a budget of $14.2 million, which is an increase of 7%. Now, primarily what that is comprised of is the transfers out increased by about $560,000, and we're holding more in contingency. Some of that is a special request that if approved, would move into the line items, but also more contingency based on the requirement for the department to hold 8.3% of expenses in contingency.
I'm curious, on that chart, it says 1%. You're not, the 7% is on a special request, not reflected here, then? Personal services?
Professional services increased by 1%, yep. And materials and services increased 2%. But the overall budget for admin services increased 7%.
I thought it was just personal, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Good question. So these are the two special requests that I referenced. Here's how you'll read these summary pages. On the left is the number that corresponds to the number on your large green two-page. And out?
Placemat.
Placemat. Yes. So the first one.
Can I go back on the other chart?
Yeah.
Can you probably explain, what was the increase to the transfers out?
Half of that is an increase in our expenses to IT because of the, primarily related to the number of laptops.
Charges that are, have increased that much?
Correct.
$550,000?
Correct.
What was the other half?
It was a conglomeration of the other internal service fees.
Tom, is that kind of standard throughout? We've gone up 17% in indirects?
No, it's not. As Cheryl said, their IT rates went up quite a bit related to all the, they had staffed remotely, ran out of the, you know, immediately following COVID. So that increased their equipment count, which is one of the factors in their IT rates. I believe the other one that went up quite a bit was facilities because they have the stabilization center now, which is a brand-new facility that has to be cleaned and maintained that wasn't there before. But.
So with post-COVID, would those go down?
I anticipate that the IT charge will go back down.
But it's not shown here.
Correct. And they're set, so next year, it is what it is. But the subsequent years may go down. Many, we purchased many new laptops, for instance, for all of the temporary staff. So there is a potential.
We got a surplus, huh?
Pardon?
When the temps are no longer there, then we have a surplus of laptops.
We can replace the old ones.
Okay.
Which would be good.
Which would be great.
Also, I, I mean, we're, we're looking at expanding facilities for health services in Redmond. I mean, so I'm wondering if that, you know, the.
It's not shown here.
And Tom was talking about, you know, how the need to, you know, more maintenance at the, at the new stabilization center. I could imagine there being IT needs at a new building, so.
Yeah.
And facility, potential facility costs as well.
Mike, just to answer your question a little bit more. Health Services, I think, is doing 28%. It's been a while since I talked to Cheryl about this, but I think they have 28% of the total ISF charge. And for the county, and a large part of it is their FTE, too. I believe is about 30% of the county. Facilities-wise, like Tom said, they added more facilities, and their computers are also around 30-ish percent of the equipment. So when you look at it based on FTE square footage and equipment, their charges roughly, it would be the same as all the other.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't, I just was surprised at a 17% increase in one year.
So the ISF rates are generally a zero-sum equation. So to the extent you have inflationary increases in the ISF departments or the occasional special request FTE addition, if one goes up, there goes down. So they're, the overall increase in ISF rates is generally inflationary, but departments go up and down based on.
Their requirements.
Allocation affects them directly.
Thank you.
Yeah. We have two requests. Number seven on your sheet is a request to convert a limited duration administrative to a regular position. And the second is number 11, which is the addition of new FTE for an Application Systems Analyst 1. The total cost is $197,183. And in fiscal year '22, I'll talk about this a little bit more, but they are both covered in terms of the funding. Subsequent years would be allocated to department internal programs.
Another bit of information is where that limited duration position came from? As in, you know, what was our thought two years ago or whenever it started?
Yeah.
Maybe for any of these?
Perhaps we can go to, the administrative assistant was a need that was able to be funded through CCBHC PPS back in 2017.
I think it was an expansion grant position.
We had it before.
Before that. Before that, it was funded through PPS. Right. You're right. Sorry.
That's all right. So we've had this position that will term or end this fiscal year. We've been able to add an administrative assistant through COVID funding to help support those efforts. So we're doing a little bit of shifting of the work duties to try and get the most essential tasks done as we're piecemealing some of those grant funds and limited duration together. So we're requesting to take that off of limited duration.
What positions does this admin assistant assist, leverage?
Yeah. The position itself oversees procurement for the department, so ordering of supplies for many of the programs. They also serve as the central communication for a lot of the external departments, so IT facilities. So the triaging of that, overseeing our shared folders. And had overseen cellphone deployment.
And it supports our admin services area and our business officer Cheryl and our operations chief, sorry, I'm using the wrong terminology, Chris Wyler. So in effect, George has an assistant, I have an assistant, Nahad finally in public health has an assistant. And these very busy folks in our admin service area actually have no administrative assistant support. Which I think we have felt very strongly was a critical need, that we've used the, the heck out of that person. And we'll move heaven and earth to try to find ways to support that role, but this is why it's now before you as a special request.
So is one way to say this is that the funding source for the original need is expiring at the end of this fiscal year. But the need that's been developed over those last couple of years continues on. And you're, one way to look, one way to say it would be either to continue a limited duration for two years based on the funding that you've identified over here or make it a permanent regular position, right?
Yes, and it's been four years.
Okay, four years.
Four years.
In reading.
Hasn't got any smaller in four years.
No, it has not.
I just find reading the impact, you want a cellphone manager, it sounds weak to me for a hundred and nine thousand dollars. If you got this here though, would you reduce your indirect charges since you're going to be handling it all and there's a no burden on IT? No?
Oh, on the.
Number eleven.
Number eleven.
It's referring to the impact.
Oh.
The cost savings of the mobile device management role.
So when it comes to the mobile device management role, we've actually explored transitioning that to the IT department. That's not something that they currently offer to our department. So if it were to move to IT, they would need additional resources and our ISF would increase. If we maintain it in-house, the ISF will not change.
Tom, do we have mobile device managers throughout the county?
No, it's decentralized. Well, there's not a central location to manage cellphones. Each department kind of maintains their.
You kind of have your phone and.
Right now, most phones are personal phones where we issue reimbursement. Only in certain departments are there county-issued phones.
Are these all county-issue phones?
Yes.
Well, why don't you go to personal, you can save yourself a position.
Oh, the pain of that discussion. Cheryl, go ahead.
Is there, I mean, is there HIPAA?
Yes.
That protected information.
Yes.
Shared over these phones. I don't want people doing that on their personal phone.
No, and we don't either, and we ran into lots of issues with that. So people access the medical record, their email, all sorts of HIPAA-protected platforms from their cellphone. They talk to clients, they talk to patients, and so we really recognized and didn't want to move in this direction frankly because it's a bit of an administrative headache, that a bit, that we absolutely had to insist that people use a county-issued cellphone that had protections built in.
Yeah. So since we're on the topic, I'm going to skip ahead to that and expand a little bit. That our cellphones in and of themselves have increased a hundred and two percent since two thousand and nineteen. And that includes the deployment, but also this software on there where you have to actually manage it. On average, the staff that was working this was working, putting in twenty hours per week on that alone based on this increase. And so we've had a significant inventory increase and it's a requirement for behavioral health specifically, as well as clients within public health. And so operationally, it's necessary. We do have some choices. If we choose not to staff it, we can either transition that to another department and maintain that HIPAA compliance through mobile device management. Or we can make a policy decision to loosen the policies in place, which would increase our HIPAA risk as cellphones are lost or stolen.
Pardon me for dwelling on this, but what does this manager do? I mean, you have your own personal phone and you got a county cellphone. Do they review what you've been saying? What do they do?
Mobile device management is a platform on the phone so that you can manage it remotely. So if it got lost or stolen, you could wipe it, securing the information on that cellphone. So there's not a person reviewing what's happening. They may push updates of software so that somebody doesn't have to come into the office and connect with somebody, update it, and then go back out.
You've got, let's say, a hundred and fifty cellphones out there owned by the county, used by your staff. Is this a full-time job to monitor that or?
It's a half-time job for the cellphones specifically.
Yeah.
What's also happened with remote work is that it's increased our need to actually maintain an inventory of what equipment is going where. New and emerging need that we have now. So the other role of this particular position would be to set up an asset management system in place so that we can maintain the location and information of that asset specifically. It's actually one of the requirements.
Computers or laptops and phones and.
Correct. Yep. And monitors and.
Keyboards and et cetera, hotspots and, I mean, probably hundreds and hundreds of pieces of equipment that require monitoring and tracking. And Chris Wyler, our phone-a-friend, just wanted to clarify that IT only provides enterprise-level support, which apparently means universal shared technologies like servers or emails or phones, not IT-specific to departments. And he's pointing out that the sheriff's office and nine-one-one has their own IT department just for this very reason. This person's really functioning to some degree in an IT role in addition to the other administrative supports that they provide to admin services, so.
Now, would this person exclusively work for health, both behavioral health and?
Yes.
The whole.
The whole, the whole kit and caboodle.
Yep.
Do we have this situation, Tom, with other departments like sheriff's office? Or I'm just curious.
Well, I think Janice is right that both sheriff and nine-one-one have technical staff, as does health outside of this position. That because they are so large and their needs are so complex and unique for the department, that that's why they've sort of established themselves over the years. So it's not unusual.
For them to have a mobile device management person?
They have that function. I don't know if they have a dedicated person or not.
But they're doing the job whether it's part-time for somebody or.
Sheriff's office, I'm sure there's somebody who's the expert on radios. I mean, we, which, you know, health doesn't have.
I'm sure with body cams, they're going to have to have someone.
Yeah.
Right.
Monitoring that too. And they have HIPAA issues too.
Actually, this is prioritize number eleven and you have thirteen priorities, so it seems like it's more at the bottom of your list.
It's, we're required to prioritize.
I know. Well, it does help us.
Yes. It's a pretty critical function.
Is this, and I'm sorry, so someone is doing this right now?
Somebody is doing that function and that position ends June thirtieth. So we have looked at outsourcing this function to another vendor. We've looked at internally moving it around. We have done our best to find some place for this to live.
And the request is to convert this from a limited duration to.
This is actually, our request, I should start with this. This fiscal year, we're, there are three positions that are ending for the department. All of those are in administrative services. So we've had to figure out what tasks are critical to maintain support to public health and behavioral health. And we've been able to move those around. However, the most critical of tasks land with these two requested positions. So converting the admin assistant to regular and this position. So we've been able to consolidate from three to two.
I mean, I, the other argument I see, potentially see for this position is we've had this COVID year where all these people have had to, you know, switch to working from home. We're going to have another year, yes, hopefully as COVID tapers off, where we're trying to figure out whether people, everybody's coming back to the office or whether some people are going to continue to do some level of telework. And I mean, there's going to be a lot of need for IT-type support during the year of figuring that out. But then maybe the need tapers off a little bit after that. So I mean, that would be an argument to kind of have this function in a, you know, in a limited-duration capacity for a certain additional period, in my mind.
And this ask comes in the context of losing one of our health information technology staff. So we have a team of four, it's going down to three because that was one of the limited-duration positions. So we're losing some capacity in a, in a set of functions that has some interrelatability with this role. So this is, as Cheryl said, a way for us to try to cobble together some resources, keep one in place longer to meet that need and deal with the fact that we don't have other places to put the work because we've shrunk that part of the team. Okay.
Part of the argument for a regular position is the consolidation.
Yeah. Yep. And I think we've covered it, but to go back to one statistic that I just wanted to share is that admin services FTE as a percent of the department has been declining over the years from seventeen percent to thirteen percent. Also in scale, we've gone during the same timeframe, we had a budget of twenty-seven million dollars and up to a fifty-two, in fiscal year twenty-two, fifty-two point eight million dollar requested budget. So it's more than doubled in terms of the scale that we're also looking at, whereas the FTE only increased twenty-five percent. So with that, I'd like to transition to the director's office. And high-level financials here, you can see fiscal year twenty-one is a budget of six hundred thousand dollars. Fiscal year twenty-two, we are requesting a forty-four percent increase or eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. That's primarily coming out of contingency. The increase as well as the personnel is increasing as they've included a health information position, which they only had for partial, partial year in fiscal year twenty-one. So that makes up the increase in budget. Substantially, nothing has changed outside of that. The director's office has two requests, number twelve and number thirteen.
Can I back up on the change on the chart where it says personnel has gone from five fifty-nine to? Can't read that.
Six sixty-two.
Six sixty-two, a hundred and three percent. What's that?
It's gone up a hundred and three thousand dollars, which is related to increases in personnel salaries. Merit increase in COLA as well as one FTE for, the classification is a public information officer.
Okay, so number, number thirteen is included in that there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Right now, that position is approved through fiscal year twenty-two. The request is to make that regular. And with that, I'd like to ask Dr. Conway to provide some context and information on those two requests.
Hello. So do you want to show, I think it's slide twenty-eight, but PD.
Yep.
Twelve, please.
Can you, can you.
That slide is up, George.
Oh, okay. That's funny. I don't see it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Let me, it's okay. I have the slide in front of me. I'll just tell you that it's advanced. It isn't displaying for the people in the Zoom environment. Oh, great. There it is. So the underlying notion here is to provide high-quality health communications, translation of technical information, and interpretation. So walking through this, oh, and I should point out that the calling it a public information officer is actually a placeholder. The way we envision this, it would be a hybrid of three different job series. That job series, senior management analyst and public health educator three. And if approved, we'll work with HR to figure out which of those job series or if we need to create a new, a new classification. So the need for this is to translate. Sorry, it disappeared again. But anyhow, the need for this is to translate complex medical and health messages into readily-understood language for public. And this need is something we've been aware of for a long time, but it really came to the fore during this last pandemic that we're still in. The impact would be to strengthen public trust and engagement through dissemination of accurate and timely information and improved health literacy. And without that, we believe that public trust and engagement would not be as strong. Running in social marketing not as strong, information dissemination, health literacy, and translational science. And when we're talking about translation here, the way that CDC and other public health, federal public health agencies use that, that refers to taking very complicated information that's, that's technical in nature and making it understandable to just average people at an appropriately, appropriate reading level. And this has actually become much more important in this social media age where there's a huge amount of information floating around and much of it frankly disinformation. And being able to very clearly articulate and translate highly-technical messages into things that are understandable and making it clear what the underlying evidence for the things that are being suggested, shared, and asked of the population is very important. I can go into the next one now. So this is background for other, the other special requests that falls within the director's office. And actually, in answer to your mention earlier, Commissioner DeBonne, I think of the director's office as being part of the administrative group. I'm not sure that we're trying to define this as a district service area. So the population has been growing, as everybody knows. And one of the things that's changed is the demography. So the overall population has grown almost thirty percent in the last little over decade. And the demography has changed as well. The percentage of the Shute County population. The percentage of Deschutes County population is 65 or older, ranged from 13% in 2000 to 20.5% now. And actually, by way of full disclosure, I have to admit I'm, I'm one of the changes in this line. Next slide, please. So chronic disease is one of the things that comes both with various lifestyle exposures, work exposures, but also with age. And there's very substantial years of potential life lost due to these, including the things listed here, stroke, larger contributors, lower respiratory diseases, often a result of either occupational exposure or smoking, diabetes mellitus, heart disease. And then we get into intentional self-harm and unintentional injuries and cancer. So this actually traverses the, these risk factors traverse both public health and behavioral health. Next slide, please. So...
Dr. Conway?
Yes.
I had asked the other day when they were giving the presentation to me, and I believe that what is it, we have like a quarter of our population, not elderly, but a quarter of our population is like obese. I mean, it was really a huge number. So I think that really like obesity, and then you've got heart disease and knee surgery and diabetes. I mean, it's, it's very impactful.
Yeah, so we could say that not only the age, but the mass of the population has increased. So the other, and the reason I bring this up is that one of the things we've discovered is the need for a full-time health officer. I should point out that we've been very fortunate to have Dr. Richard Fawcett, who's been on an on-call status since, I think, 2007, and provides excellent, as needed, acute comical disease consultation during outbreaks and when we see clients in the STD clinic or Women's Health Clinic or other clinics that require some additional information. But during, actually during the measles outbreak, what was that, a year and a half, two years ago? And certainly during COVID, we've found that there's been a very high demand for medical information. And I, this isn't intended as at all self-serving, but I do have to point out that I've been helping out a lot with this collateral aid, even though I'm not in a physician bill at for the county. And Dr. Fawcett hasn't not been able, because he's an infectious disease physician with a practice, has not been able to be as available as, as needed. There's a trend nationally for counties, once they get to a certain size, and I think we're at that size, to having a full-time health officer. The other challenge is that it's very difficult to recruit for a half-time. We've gone through a recruiting process and had virtually no applications and didn't provide any solution. So it's been difficult to recruit top-notch candidates for such a position. The impact of this would be to attract and keep a suitable person and ensure long-term medical and clinical vision and solutions, to ensure medical, clinical direction and capacity in growing community facing complex health conditions and emerging threats. And I should point out that we do have a psychiatric medical director who, Dr. Will Berry, who's also served as the safety officer during COVID. So we've been very fortunate to have him available to assist with some of these needs in the interim, but he's, he's very busy with his, his actual job. Without this, we anticipate continued difficulty in filling position, a lack of medical, clinical capacity, direction in addressing an aging population, as well as what we call this epidemiologic transition to a more aged population with more chronic disease. We believe this also weakens our ability to assess and track emerging threats to growing population. And that would in turn make us less able to provide the department and you, as commissioners, recommendations to improve community health. So we'd be happy to field, field questions about these two requests.
George, Mike Meyer, I have a quick question. Under 12, it says, increase health officer from .5. And I'm confused, do we have a half-time health officer now?
Actually, we had a position, a half-time position...
So we're not going to give him full-time? We're going to go out and recruit a new one if this is approved?
Yeah, we have approved a .5 position that Dr. Fawcett works on an on-call basis.
Okay, up to a certain amount or, so he would be gone?
Correct.
Correct.
Well, actually...
The on-call status would...
So for a full-time, it's position with roll-up costs, it's about 100 and, oh, 300 and some thousand? 350?
340,000. But we've been looking for that position for quite a while. And you really think of the today's medical world, you're not going to find, I'm surprised...
I'm not questioning that, Paige. I just want, I'm just trying to figure this out right here.
If I may, if I may add, Mr. Meyer, I don't think that this would result in Dr. Fawcett's severance or, or not remaining on-call for the department because his very special consultative ability for acute infectious diseases especially. But he's not available to fulfill this forward-looking, substantial role and also not available to commit the sort of...
The cost for Dr. Fawcett is not reflected in this, correct?
So it's more than 168.9?
Actually, we're using, we're, it would be much, much less than that. The, that amount was the imputed amount for a half-time health officer. And we, we've spent the last, I think, five months doing recruitment to no effect for health of half-time.
I just want to be, I'm confused. It says increase from .5, the .5 is Dr. Fawcett?
No, I'm sorry, the .5 is the, is the position we've been unsuccessfully recruiting for since the fall.
Okay, so Fawcett's not here anywhere?
No, Fawcett is, he's an on-call employee, so that's just illustrated in our varying costs. And his typical, his typical on-call hours run about five hours a week, have gone, during COVID, have gone over 10 on some occasions.
Now, if we recruited a full-time, would they just work for the county or would they work here and work part-time someplace else or have their own practice?
Well, actually, no, what we want is somebody that would work full-time. However, Nahad may want to weigh in on this. There have been some discussions with the school district, especially Ben Lapine, and also possibly Hot Desert, with some job sharing and possibly some cost sharing because some of these services are also important to those organizations. But we, we haven't gotten to the point of, of any substantive agreements on that. Nahad, do you want to fill in the cracks on that?
No, I think you covered it, George.
Thank you.
So for the health information position, I'm just thinking, what does it look long, look like long-term? As in, right now during COVID, we've got a lot of, you know, press releases and community information happening. I think of the Board of Commissioners as the local public health authority. And yeah, so the scenario in the last year, I guess, is what I'm, I'm thinking through. In the last year, the governor's office defined how things are going to proceed. So as a local public health authority, a board of commissioners, three of us, laypeople elected, so we're not professionals here, it's kind of happened around us. You know, the, the governor said this is what's going to happen in our health gauge with the, the rules or the scenario, which is fine, you know, pandemic. But what does it look like if we're not in that surge pandemic capacity? And, you know, how much information is going to go through the local public health authority before press releases go out from health? And, you know, we send these out, you know, diabetes and heart disease and, and, you know, some of the basics, some of the information we need. But I just, I, I'm not really leaning towards empowering the health department to have the health department message. And oh, by the way, we'll let the board of commissioners know after we send out the message. So just a scenario that could happen in the future.
Thanks, thanks, Commissioner. And I do want to explain, this is not intended to supplant or usurp any of the role that Whitney Hale plays as a public information officer for the county. As a matter of fact, this person would work very closely in coordination. The second thing is they're not, their primary job would not be pushing messages. Their primary job would be translating complex information to something that's understandable by the public. So building tools and messaging for persuasion. The other thing is that while the, the risk status echelons have been, and the behavior expected at the community level has been largely determined by the county, I'm sorry, by the state government, the implementation has been left to counties and it really falls to the health departments to persuading people to do things like that, whether it's masking, maintaining social distance, and providing updates on the frequency of disease, as well as persuading people to vaccinate. We knew going in this pandemic that we would have real challenges because Deschutes County is one of the centers, actually measurable both in the state and in the country for vaccine hesitancy. So we've had very high levels of non-medical exemption requests for schoolchildren and deschutes. And of course, we were involved, we, we, thank you all for your support for the bill that was approved in the last biennium that Representative Helt was a cosponsor for eliminating those exemptions, but that fell, that fell as collateral damage to, to the end-of-year budget dealings. So this is a really known need and it's regarded as a very important part of public health practice by CDC. And actually, in schools of public health, health communications, and even in the modernization model for the state, health communications is regarded as one of the five key disciplines for public health.
Okay, yeah, just a conversation.
I think you guys have done a wonderful job in communication to the average public. I mean, from the health department and the commissioner's office, from a civilian looking at, I don't see where you've had problems. Of course, I'm looking from the outside, but I think you've done a wonderful job in handling the crisis you've had to deal with.
So I, I do want to point out, and once again, this is not at all intended to trumpet my own involvement, but part of this is succession planning, given my, given my age and my understanding that the most likely hire that would back Phil May, whenever that happens, would be someone with more in an administrative role.
George, I think you've done a wonderful job. Maybe we can keep you on part-time, fill in this position.
Can I just say about the, the health information and engagement position, that right now, we're in the middle of the COVID crisis and we can all see very clearly the need for someone, you know, for a public information officer or essentially a Morgan Emerson, to, to be doing all sorts of information, public information work related to COVID. And thinking beyond COVID, you know, what the opportunities would be if you had someone who was just extremely good at both understanding health, health matters and translating those for the public, and also, you know, just using social media tools and, and all of those things. I, I think one of the really big opportunities could actually be in, in prevention work.
Correct.
Because there's a endless, there's endless opportunities to head off health problems upstream. And so, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't picture, like, I'm not picturing this person as someone we keep around for the next crisis. I'm, I'm picturing being able to use this person's skills to push our prevention work when, you know, and working upstream and, and, you know, connecting to the key, you know, the, the key people who, you know, the key audiences who need certain kinds of health information to, to help them get ahead of problems before they become big, complex, and expensive.
Thanks very much, Commissioner Chang. That, that's actually an excellent, probably much better than I did, articulation of the key role for this is to be that sort of proactive messaging and to persuade. And that includes things like social determinants of health, it includes lifestyle change, et cetera. So having good persuasive skills along with that sort of translation function of technical things are really critical. So thanks for that very perceptive notion.
Okay, great, could we take a...
Yeah, we were just having a...
About 10 minutes?
Be great, thank you.
Great job.
Great job.
Yeah.
You've done a wonderful job, Bill. I tell you, we might have to fire Bruce. Don't give him that opportunity. You hear that, Bruce?
He wants to respond now, I can see it. Like, Bruce, put the video on.
Okay. Are we just waiting for, should we wait for Dan, or can we plow ahead?
Of course.
Okay. So next up is Behavioral Health Services. Before you are the programs that comprise behavioral health. We've got Crisis and Stabilization, Access and Integration, which is a new combined program, Intensive Adult, Comprehensive Care for Youth and Families, outpatient complex care, and Intellectual and Developmental Disability Services, IDD for short. High Level Financials. Fiscal year '22 requested budget is $39.6 million, which is an increase of 4% over the fiscal year '21 revised budget. High Level Things to Note. Federal grants and payments are going down by $610,000. That really is around. CCBHC expansion ends mid, in the spring of next year. The Bureau of Justice Administration ends in December, so that's some of the major changes. We expect a no-cost extension on that one, though it is not included in the requested budget because that needs to be approved. You'll notice, as I mentioned before, CCBHC PPS is included. The, sorry, one step above that, the state grants and payments you'll see goes up by $1 million in fiscal year '22. And the primary driver of that is the Criminal Justice Commission's IMPAX grant that we talked about earlier. Another thing to note, on Title 19, you'll see that increase by 189%, or $660,000. That's directly related to CCBHC PPS because we get a higher rate per service when that is in effect. So that's why you see an increase in the revised budget. Other revenue you'll see go down by $900,000. That's because the local grant that we are currently receiving in fiscal year '21 for COVID from Central Oregon Health Council, we've received it, so we will not receive it in '22.
You skipped charges for service. Is that because our charges are lower, or we're given less service?
Charges are lower. As Oregon Health Plan membership increased, the fees that we're collecting from patients is just coming in less. We are seeing a decline in services, but really, we've seen an increase in the fee for service and OHP membership. So, well, one section goes-
You say a decline in service, there's less workload?
There, well, it's a mixed bag. So there is less workload right now for the assessments. They declined pretty significantly because our referral sources were closed, schools, primary care, et cetera. That is beginning to tick up. We had a decline in service hours, which is different from service events. So what we learned is when we moved about 80% of our services from in-person to telehealth because of the safety requirements, people cannot hang out on the phone or a video screen for quite as long for a therapy session as they do in-person. So what we learned is that 35 minutes, 40 minutes, 45 minutes might have been max capacity for people to do therapy on a screen versus coming into the office. So that results in a net decrease in service hours, not necessarily a decrease in service events. So there's a difference there. So you bill fees based on number of minutes, kind of like lawyers, except we're so much nicer because we're-
But we're not spending as many minutes.
Huh? We're not providing as many minutes.
So we don't need as many people.
Is there a significant difference in the quality of service given or received, you know? It's a shorter time period.
Yeah, it depends on who you ask, but I really want to address Mike Meyer's comment because I think that's not really understanding. Yes, there's been a decrease in number of minutes provided in service. There's still as many events being provided, and we had some increases in non-billable services because we had to do so much outreach and care coordination, delivering meds, bringing food, just trying to go to people's homes to decrease isolation. All of those things were occurring, and in some months, those actually increased. So we're really only talking about billable minutes, which is not representative of the full array of services. In addition, many staff then were doing things for our incident. We deployed, at one point, up to 15 of our staff to the incident at various points in time at varying levels. So they're working, they're doing different kinds of things, and they're showing up differently in terms of revenue.
A lot of it is not billable.
A lot of it is not billable, and we'll talk more about that. And then, I'm sorry, Bill, I wanted to answer your question as well.
Well, I actually have two. So it sounds like this year, there were less, and so that's $549,000, but you're proposing even less next year, when hopefully we don't, so the fiscal year proposed as $387 charged for services compared to this year at $549?
That was the budget. So we've aligned fiscal year '22 with what we're seeing.
Financially?
Yep, financially.
Okay. Great. And then my question was around quality, quality of-
Yeah, that's a really good question, and I don't know that we can 100% answer that until we have a little bit more time to look at outcomes. For our clients who are seriously mentally ill, who have psychotic symptoms, severe depression, substance use disorders, telehealth is not ideal. It's just not. These are people who need to connect with a human being in person, need to be in a place and be seen. They're also the people that are probably the most physically at risk for COVID. So this was a terrible dilemma to begin. How do we keep these folks safe at the same time that we know that providing services this way is not the best fit? What we found is that some of our young adults, many of our clients who have young children, really benefited from telehealth. We will continue to offer that option to them if they prefer it and are doing well, and it continues to be reimbursed at the same rate. So if all those things continue to align, and it still looks like a good option for folks, some folks in rural communities that can't get to us, we'll keep doing it. Yep.
So fiscal knowns and unknowns. What we do know is that the Oregon Health Plan contract with Pacific Source, our coordinated care organization, has an increased enrollment, and that's increased revenue. We do know that the CCBHC PPS prospective payment is approved through September 2023, and there is strong ongoing support legislatively for that, both at the state and federal level. And we have enough in available revenue to cover the grant positions that are in the CCBHC expansion grant through fiscal year '22. Janice will talk more about that. What is unknown is whether or not the state is going to put forth funding to match the federal requirement for that system. We have been supporting that through our own agreement with the state so that we can continue to receive CCBHC PPS. So that's how we've been participating. We believe that the state is supportive of this, but that has yet to be unknown. Legislative decisions around increased funds for aid and assist, as well as crisis and residential services, there's strong conversation of that this year as well, and we anticipate that to come through, but we have yet to know if so and how much, as well as obviously grant availability of the CCBHC expansion grant at the federal level, the continuation or opportunity to continue the IMPAX grant for Stabilization Center, as well as IMPAX financially for Measure 110, which was the decriminalization of drug-
Low-level drug crimes.
Low-level drugs, yes. Behavioral Health has three requests, 1, 6, and 8 on your sheet. The total FTE that is impacted is 12.6. One of that is a continued position, so overall net is 11.6 new from the revised FTE. Total cost is $1.2 million, and in fiscal year '22, they are requesting, or we are requesting $241,970 in county funds to support. With that, I'll hand it over to Janice Carso.
Thank you. So I will do, I will move pretty quickly through a little bit of review that I think is important for the policy decisions for you today. I will highlight a couple of themes that will be familiar, so I won't spend too much time on that. I'll do a little bit of a deeper dive on CCBHC because it's a really critical part of the discussion and your consideration of the special requests, and then we'll talk about the special requests. You have this handout in your folder. Remember that the CMHP's role is to serve everyone in the community, in the county, with OHP Medicaid that has a mental health condition and meets eligibility. We also serve everyone, regardless of coverage, who needs acute or crisis services. We are required to provide the full span of behavioral health services that are spelled out in the statutory guidelines, and we are required to serve individuals who can't get the level of care they need elsewhere in the community. So people who need psychiatry, case management, et cetera, they generally are served by us regardless of whether or not they're covered by Medicaid. This is just a refresher. This is how we apply county general fund dollars and the county's investment in our services. We typically are applying those at higher levels in the parts of our services that serve more acute individuals. The reason for that is that a lot of the services they need are not eligible for reimbursement. So that's sort of what we talked about before. We do a lot of pre-treatment outreach and engagement in, with homeless individuals, with folks incarcerated, with folks in the community who are really struggling with severe mental illness. We can't bill for that because it occurs pre-assessment. We do student threat assessment for all of the schools. We can't bill for that because it's not a billable service. So those are some examples. That's often how county general fund is applied, and county general fund right now makes up roughly 5% of our total resources. Again, you have a terminology- Again, you have a terminology guide in your handout. I would direct you to aid and assist and civil commitment because I will talk about both of those in relation to the special requests. Briefly, aid and assist refers to the population of people who have, who are before the court having committed a crime, and they are too ill to understand court proceedings. So, they're psychotic, they can't sort of understand the real consequences of what's happening in the courtroom. They get committed either to the hospital, or they get committed in the community. When they get committed in the community, we are responsible to monitor and wrap services around them. The civil commitment population is quite similar, except they've not committed a crime. So, there are people who are extremely ill, they're a danger to themselves or others, they have to be served at hospital levels of care, but often in the community, and frankly, often while they're homeless. So, it's quite a task. Key themes, we've said a lot about 2020. I'm not going to say more. What we learned during this year is that a crisis that has been growing for some time became even more acutely apparent this year. And that crisis is that the resources available for our most ill individuals have shrunk and shrunk and shrunk, meaning hospital beds, community secure treatment beds, while at the same time, the population has grown. This puts enormous pressure on our behavioral health resources. We are also learning from evidence that there's increased behavioral need across the board throughout the country, and I'll talk more about that later. We've had some good news. The good news is that CCBHC, the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Demonstration Project, which is the one that affords the PPS rate, is showing real promise of sustained commitment at both the federal and the local level. And we're beginning to see some emerging promising results, and I'll talk about some of the metrics we keep track of in a moment. Just a word about COVID in the behavioral health world. What we're observing from national household surveys is that there's a 270% overall increase in US rates of clinical depression and anxiety. And the reason I say clinical is that these are people that are reporting symptoms that would result in the diagnosis if they showed up in my office. So, we went from about 11 to 12% of the population having some depression and anxiety to 41% of the population. It is significantly higher for our young adults, 56%, and it is higher for those who earn under 40,000 a year, which has a direct impact on our service population because, as you know, the community mental health program mostly serves people with very low income. Sadly, tragically, there has been a 22% increase in Oregon overdose deaths. That is consistent with national trends. We see increased client acuity and decreased placement options, which I just referenced, and we see increased domestic violence and under-reporting of child abuse, which I'm here to tell you does not mean it's not happening. What it means is we're not hearing about it, and we know that all of these things combined are going to result ultimately in increased need for our services. We've talked a bit about the workforce impact. I have lots of employees, and they are tired. They have done their jobs and deployed to the COVID pandemic and managed enormous change and been homeschooling children while trying to telework and, and, and. So, it's just been an incredible year of learning about how amazing my staff are, all of our staff, how committed and how dedicated. The implications, bottom line is we're seeing increased need for behavioral health services in the context of resources that are depleted or under pressure. This is a little bit of a look back. I'll try to move through it quickly. Remember that the community mental health program is not, Deanne Carr used to say, "Two chairs and a fern." We are not doing, you know, nice, friendly, "We'll talk to you about your problems, and you'll pay us a certain dollar an hour." We're really seeing people who have very basic safety net kinds of needs. Community mental health programs developed in response to hospitals saying, "We don't want to warehouse people with mental illness anymore. We want them served in the community, and so we're going to create this system that really provides the kinds of services people need to be stable in the community who used to be in the hospital." So, we're the bridge between the hospital and the community. We work really hard to address some tragic outcomes for our clients. We know that people with serious mental health conditions are overrepresented among the homeless population. We know that people who are incarcerated are five to six times more likely to have a serious mental illness than people in the general population. So, we really work to try to reverse trends towards incarceration and homelessness for our client population. We also work to try to reduce the trend towards early death because we know that people with serious mental health conditions die, on average, 25 years before their like peers in the community. And finally, more recently, community mental health programs are really seen as a partner in trying to address mental health conditions before they drive up healthcare costs because we know that high utilizers of expensive healthcare are 40% more likely to have a co-occurring mental health condition, and that when people's mental health conditions aren't treated, they, they don't have good healthcare practices, and their chronic conditions get worse, and they show up in the ED and the hospital more frequently. So, the question is, to get to your question, Mr. Myers, are we making a difference? We think we are, and we think that CCBHC funding has really helped us to begin to be able to add the services we needed and track whether or not those services are making a difference. CCBHC was the biggest and most significant and profound investment in mental health since the 1970s. So, in terms of homelessness and jail, for the people in our expansion grant, we track this, and we have seen a 13% reduction in homelessness for that client population. We see across the board a 60% reduction in recidivism to jail settings for the individuals we serve, and we were able with CCBHC funds to add a forensic assertive community treatment team, which is a team that works pretty exclusively with our aid and assist population and our psychiatric review board population, which are people who are placed in the community because of an insanity plea. The aid and assist population has grown significantly, and that's why we added Forensic Act. In terms of impact on early death, it's probably too soon to tell, but here's what we're looking at. We have added primary care at all locations. We track outcomes on things like hypertension and diabetes, and what we're observing is that for our clients who have access to integrated care, their A1C control is 88%, which is higher than Mosaic Medical's, for example, general population. And we have a very similar client population because they're an FQHC. We are following up after ED visits 95% of the time, so if someone shows up and they're our person and they're in the ED for any reason, we follow up with them within seven days to make sure we're engaging them in services. Our high utilization of ED impact has been significant. We've seen a 14% reduction in our CCBHC expansion population. We've seen a 21% reduction in a high utilizer group that we've been tracking for several years, and we've seen a 23% decrease in depression scores, which is a very important indicator because depression is strongly correlated with poor health outcomes around managing chronic conditions. So, here's the big decision, or one of them, there's a few. CCBHC, so we're seeing real promise, and what we're also seeing is that CCBHC now has five years of broad, sustained, and I would say increasing bipartisan support, both in Congress at the national level and now locally. The evidence for that is that since 2017, when the demonstration pilot was launched, it has been extended four times. In very difficult circumstances, it still was extended through bipartisan support for this bill or project. There are now 340 CCBHCs in 40 states, where there was once 45 clinics in eight states. So, this is a project that has grown and had increasing investment. The Oregon Health Authority, who needed some convincing, is now fully on board, and they are supporting a bipartisan Oregon bill that will provide match funding and continue the CCBHC project in Oregon. The other thing we're observing is that prospective payment models really do create sustainability, and that is because they allow CMHPs to cover all costs for all patients via a cost formula that's based on services. And I'll say a bit more about PPE in the next, or PPE, PPS, in the next slide. And in fact, this phenomenon of, at the last minute, the federal government continuing the CCBHC project has resulted in us generating for the last three years unplanned additional PPS revenue that we've been able to use to build up reserve and to offset some costs when we had years where there were some gaps. The concern I have is that that may not be making the best use of taxpayer dollars that were intended to actually expand services. So, we are proposing that CCBHC PPS revenue be considered a regular funding stream going forward based on the level of commitment, and this will allow for consistent and proactive budget and service planning. It will reduce the number of limited duration positions and the complex tracking associated with that, and most importantly, it will use the dollars to do what the legislature intended it to do, which is expand services for people with serious mental health conditions. So, there it is. That is the proposal, the policy decision that we're bringing to this board, that we, that PPS revenue be considered ongoing funding and used in the budget planning process to support services as intended, and that we begin the process of converting limited duration CCBHC expansion grant positions with some thoughtfulness to regular funded positions through this ongoing revenue stream. I promised to take a break after this slide, so, for questions. Little bit of PPS 101. What is it actually? It's really an enhanced Medicaid rate, and what it does is it allows an organization to take the total cost of providing services minus the amount of revenue that they receive through Medicaid reimbursement, and calculate a wraparound enhanced rate that is paid on top of the Medicaid reimbursement to cover all costs. So, it was an acknowledgement on the part of the federal government that what Medicaid reimburses for these services never covers the cost, ever. And so, it allowed agencies to calculate the real cost and have an enhanced rate of The other thing to know is that we have two grants, demonstration and expansion. As we convert direct service expansion grant positions to regular, they're able to bill PPS. Under the expansion grant, they are not. So, we increase our ability to generate the enhanced rate if we transition some direct service positions into regular positions that can bill PPS. Right now, we have to hold those positions out of our Medicaid submission because they're paid for with grant funds, and that's okay. However, that is a limited term amount of money. It is not certain that we get it every year, and it prevents us from then benefiting from the demonstration model, which really allows a way to truly cover your costs through this prospective payment model. For example, we have done some projections, and we are able to cover our CCBHC expansion grant positions, all of them, if we choose to keep all of them, when they end in April of next year with the PPS revenue that they would generate and the additional PPS revenue generated by our entire direct service entity. We could cover them the following year the same way as well. So, I really want to pause here because this is complicated and just check in and see if there are some questions.
Janice, so are those limited duration positions now?
We have 19 limited duration expansion grant positions. Yes?
I'll wait till the end.
You'll wait till the end? Okay. So, I'm moving into special requests now. We have three. One is in crisis response. It's to address this growing acute need that I described earlier. We're adding, we're proposing to add 6.6 FTE in key roles in crisis and intensive adult services, and the total County General Fund ask for this particular request is $241,970. We have an access improvement request to prepare for system improvement, increase access to services, manage referrals, et cetera. We're proposing adding two FTE and converting a language access coordinator to a regular position. We are able to cover that through existing revenue and PPS. There is no County General Fund request.
What number is that one?
The numbers are at the top. Number one is the crisis response.
Right, I got the first one.
Oh, sorry. Number six is the improved access, and number eight is infrastructure. And this is really intended to do two things, reduce fiscal and compliance risk, but also add employment services at our rural hubs. It's requesting to add three FTE to increase compliance, contract, and grant management, and an FTE to increase employment services. That's a total of three. The County General Fund request for this is $0.
All grant funded?
It is all funded through prospective payment revenue. Existing revenue that's already in reserve and projected revenue that will occur in the next fiscal year.
You don't anticipate requesting general fund monies until 2026 when we're broke?
CCBHC prospective payment model is continued right now by the federal government until September 2023, but we believe, and the, and the real ask here is that you join me in my optimism, that I think there's true federal support for this. It has grown and grown and grown. It is bipartisan. They've made a big commitment, and I think it's here to stay. So, that's the basis of that ask. So, this graph's a little complicated, and I tried my darndest to get the colors to come out clearer, so you've got my best effort here, but I'll walk you through it. This is the Oregon State Hospital number of beds. At the top is the total number of beds. It's gone between 585 and 640-some over the last decade or so. The green line that starts on the left-hand side at the bottom, 109.7, is the number of aid and assist beds, and you will see that that green line climbs and climbs and climbs until this year, when aid and assist population is taking 296 beds. Since the total number of beds is finite, what that has meant is that the beds available for our civil commitment population have gone from 199 in January 2012 to 38.8 in December of 2020, and it actually went down again recently. I think it's in the 20s. So, what that means in the real world is that very, very ill individuals are in the community. There is not a hospital bed for them. They need constant wraparound care so that they don't come to harm or harm someone else, and that is a growing crisis. So, there's been a 77% decrease in civil commitment beds, and I measured that, I think, from January 17th. So, for Commissioner Adair, who always checks my numbers, that's why the percent is 77 and not higher. There's been a 72% increase because of this growing civil commitment population in the number of hearings we're covering every year. There has been a 400% increase in the aid and assist population, so our aid and assist clients have quadrupled in the last three years. This is in part due to growing population and also in part due to continued efforts to divert people from law enforcement settings and contacts. At the same time, as this statewide hospital bed decrease, we have seen a decrease in local secure treatment options. So, we had 42 beds in 2018. We now have 37 beds for people like this.
That's statewide, right?
No, that is us.
That's central?
So, statewide, we lost, we went from 100 and 300 civil commitment- No, that is us. So statewide, we lost, we went from 100 and, 300 civil commitment beds, or sorry, we went from 199 civil commitment beds to 38.
And we went how many here?
And locally, we lost five beds from 42 to 37. So now we have 37 beds in our community, and they're always full. There's never, I mean...
You have 37 beds in Deschutes?
Here in Deschutes County.
And statewide is what?
38, total.
You said it's gone down to 20s now, is what you just said.
It's recent, I don't have the most recent exact number, so I didn't share it. So in other words, yeah, so there's...
Yeah, 28 of the 37 statewide?
No, no. The 38 beds statewide are for everyone in the state. What I, what my crisis team told me is we haven't gotten anyone in the state hospital on a civil commitment in over two years because there's just no beds. So we have to rely on our local beds, and we have fewer than we had two years ago while this population has increased. So this is the reason these services are in crisis.
These are St. Charles has them.
No, they're, these are secure residential treatments. So it could be something like a residential treatment foster home. It could be a PSRB bed, which is a telecare. It could be a, oh, what's the other acronym? Adult Treatment Home. They're typically funded through residential dollars that come from the state to the community directly, and they allow for someone who cannot live independently to live in an assisted sort of housing situation. Typically, they have anywhere from six to eight or 12 beds.
And that population of beds has gone?
Has gone down.
So those 37 local beds?
Yeah.
Those are for people who are potentially civilly committed, potentially aid and assist, and, and, and other, like other populations? Or is that the intention behind those 37 beds?
Those 37 beds are shared by everyone who needs that level of care, including people on aid and assist or civil commitment.
That doesn't include our center, right, or?
Doesn't include stabilization center because stabilization center is stabilization. It's not residential.
It doesn't include our jail, or?
Well, unfortunately, our jail becomes the secure treatment facility where treatment does not occur. So that's a really apt question because many of these people end up in jail because there's just nowhere else for them to be, and they're dysregulated enough and disorganized enough to be causing problems in the community. At the same time that all of this is going on, we've experienced 129% increase in mobile crisis assessment team, MCAT calls, since 2018. And as you saw earlier, population has increased by 28% in the last decade. So all of this combined has led to this crisis response request. I'm going to do this really fast. We're asking for a civil commitment monitor. That is someone, right now, we have one civil commitment investigator. The hearings have gone up significantly, as you saw, by 72%. So they have to do all the hearings and all the monitoring that is required. We are asking for a monitor to do the monitoring, to do the wraparound services, coordinate the services, provide the behavioral health interventions to some degree, and do the monitoring that has to be done per the law. We are asking for a crisis stabilization center supervisor because we are anticipating adding staff at the stabilization center, and we are finding that running a 24/7 facility requires additional supervision. So right now, our crisis array has three supervisors, but one is specifically for the forensic diversion team, which is a large team. The other one oversees MCAT, and the third is for the night shift. At the stabilization center, we really need additional resource there to support staff and ensure safe coverage of shifts. We are asking for a case manager in the stabilization center, and the case manager role is really to do two things. One is to help provide some basic needs supports for people that present to the stabilization center because they come to us homeless, not connected to medical care. They may have immediate acute health needs, housing needs, animal shelter needs, coordination of other kinds of services. The other portion of this role will be to help us with a small pilot project in which we are responding to some crisis calls without law enforcement, which really requires us to send two people. We cannot just send one clinician out to someone's home without law enforcement present. This position, the case manager and the civil commitment monitor, are the two for which we are requesting county general funds, just so you're aware.
These are part of the 6.6?
These are part of the 6.6. We're requesting to increase the Deschutes County Stabilization Center night shift. We have one position that's a .6. We'd like to increase it to a .4. It's easier to recruit a full-time person, especially for the night shift. That is not a popular shift. We're having trouble filling it. So that's in the crisis program. Then, further wrapping services around this population, we have a forensic act team. It requires a nurse. Right now, that nurse is supported by CARES Act dollars. We just kind of scrambled to put some dollars into that role. We're actually requesting that we have a regular public health nurse who can cover the forensic act team as well as some other intensive teams nursing needs. Nursing is always a shortage for us. We're asking for a case manager on the forensic act team. Again, this is the team that works with that aid and assist population. And we would like to add a peer support specialist to our community support services team, which is an additional team in the intensive adult array that, right now, does not have any peers. Most of our teams have a peer. This team does not have a peer. Peers are used heavily to do outreach and engagement in the community with people with mental health conditions who are struggling to come in for services. Last, this is really small. We have a case manager on our act team. They, we lost .2 of that FTE in last year's budget, and we would like to add that back to make that a full-time position. Our concern is that without this infusion of resource into our intensive array, we will have serious potential harms to clients and community. We're already seeing it now. We're seeing poor outcomes for these clients. They need an enormous amount of support. They hurt themselves. They suffer, and they potentially hurt others. And they are cycling through our ED rapidly and need lots of support.
Wait, I got my sheet.
Emergency department.
Oh, sorry. Emergency department.
I would have found that.
Two, two more. So hang in there with me. Our access team is kind of our front door. They manage service requests. They ensure that there's access. They screen and assess most of our clients. They assign a level of care. They make sure people get to the right resource. They also now are going to be tasked with developing the rapid engagement model, which is a new model of services for bringing people into community mental health programs that's intended to increase engagement and improve outcomes. They have seen a 230% increase in panel providers since 216, 2016. Panel providers are the people in the community that are part of our continuum of behavioral health services. So these are private practitioners or agencies that serve people with lower-level need so that the community mental health program can focus on high-need individuals. That panel has grown from 90-some to over 300. We receive referrals from them, and we make referrals to them. And so to manage our service population, we really have to be closely coordinating with that group. We had a 19 increase prior to the COVID year in our service population, increasing requirements by statute for warm handoffs and follow-up care, and the rapid engagement pilot project, which we're implementing this year. Moving to language access, we added a language access coordinator through a grant. We would like that to become a regular position. We are relying heavily on that person. I asked for some workload data from that person and asked explicitly that we exclude the workload associated with COVID. Last year, that person had about 31 on average specific language access services they were doing per quarter.
Interpreter?
No, this is not an interpreter. This is someone who vets materials, proofreads translated materials, helps with interpreter contracts, helps connect people to language services, looks at our materials to make sure they're up to snuff, and on occasion does interpretation. So they do a broad range of tasks. So they count that work. So some of those things could be an interpretation event, but some of those counts could be a whole project. Last quarter, they had 71 compared to an average of 31 the previous year. That's 129% increase. We think it's an important role. We think that it helps us increase access for people who need some language support. And we also noticed that we have slightly lower rates of engagement for our Latinx, Black, and Indigenous clients, which leads to our asks. We're asking for a referral coordinator on the access team to help improve overall management of the client population, ensure implementation of rapid engagement, get people to the right resource. We're asking to make the language access coordinator a regular position to increase equitable access to services, improve the quality of language responses, and improve trust with a part of our community that we care about. And we would like to add a peer support specialist as a bilingual health navigator on our access team. We use peers heavily on all of our teams. We have a veterans peer, an opioid peer, forensic diversion peers, harem and healthcare peers. We would like to add one peer whose sole purpose is to help us do a better job reaching out to and engaging people in our Black, Indigenous, and Latinx community who need behavioral health care and might not find us otherwise.
Do you already remember all that?
That is number six. Without this, our concern is a lack of access to appropriate care and continued disparity in the kind of care that people receive. Last ask, this is an infrastructure ask, but it's really critical. Our compliance workload, we have a team called the Continuous Quality Assurance Team. It's on your cheat sheet there. They oversee compliance, privacy, and policy. So it's a big book of business. A huge chunk of their role is to audit our charts to ensure that we have compliance with the myriad of rules that make our charts compliant. If the charts are not compliant, we don't get paid for the service. So there's a direct fiscal impact. Their workload has doubled, and the graphic there shows the increased number of notes, increased number of records that they're reviewing, and at the same time, their FTE has gone down by .5. The other workload that's doubled is managing federal grants. As you know, managing federal grants requires significantly more oversight compared to like an OHP contract, and this is an increased workload. Both of these, if we're not doing them well, cost us money. We back out billing when our notes are not compliant. That's the bottom line. And we lose money in grants potentially if we're not managing them well, not meeting required metrics and timelines. The third part of this ask is a case manager for supported employment. Supported employment is a service that supports people with mental illness and finding competitive work in the labor force. It is a proven evidence-based practice. People that receive this service are more likely to obtain competitive work than those in traditional vocational rehab programs by a factor of two. They're twice as likely when they're supported this way. They work more hours in weeks and earn more wages. They have longer job tenures. They have fewer psychiatric hospital admissions, and they spend fewer days in the hospital when hospitalized. It's a really good investment, and we do a good job. These statistics, and I don't have the comparison to the state. I'm sorry. You'll have to take me at my word. But we have really good outcomes in our supported employment program in terms of the percentage of people that we employ in competitive work. Currently, we only offer the service in Bend, and we want to expand the service to Lepine and Redmond. We think those clients deserve that service. We'd like to add it. And by adding the case manager, we will be able to do that. And that's behavioral health. Any?
Both of them?
That was just behavioral health. I want to pause here and see if there are any questions or if anything needs further clarification.
We've covered these all here then, huh?
Not quite.
Okay, I'll wait till you finish then.
Oh, wait till the end. There.
I really quickly wanted to make some comments about the future of CCBHC.
Yes.
Janice mentioned that, you know, to support, I think basically what she said was to support six and eight in this, in this special request list. All it takes is a belief that CCBHC is going to be there. And just before I was sworn in, I had, I had some communications with Janice about kind of, you know, about the behavioral health division. And she indicated to me how important this CCBHC program was to the functioning of, you know, to so many things that behavioral health wanted to do. So I made a quick phone call to congressional staffers that I know who are very familiar with the appropriations process, and they, this was, so this was December 2020, and they, they said, oh, well, for the fiscal year that had already started, which we hadn't passed a budget for, both houses of Congress had recommended substantial increases in appropriations for CCBHC.
Yeah.
And, and so the, what that, what that reflected to me, because you'll recall that last session of Congress, we had a Republican-controlled Senate, you know, a Democrat-controlled House. So the fact that both of those houses of Congress had, had recommended increased appropriations over $10 million for the current fiscal year reflected to me, A, that there was this bipartisan support, and B, that this was sort of a, like a trending program, you know, within, you know, among congressional appropriators. So there, I, I do believe that there is broad bipartisan increasing support for CCBHC. So when Janice is saying she thinks that, she's feeling that it has a, you know, has a bright and stable future, I, just based on my experiences with the federal appropriations process, I want to, I want to reinforce that.
Janice, isn't the real problem that Oregon has a higher percentage of substance use disorder people in our population, and we were like 47th for funding? So that's one of the reasons why we were one of the eight states that were originally picked up that desperately needed help.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got, and then what's going to happen with Measure 110?
Good news on Measure 110.
Oh, good.
I'll be back on Measure 110.
Okay.
I think they're going to RFP some things in the community. And I know that our substance use providers will be very interested in applying, but we may try to collaborate with them on a joint, we'll, we'll see. I don't want to speak for them. I've not been able to talk with them yet. But there is resource coming specifically to address substance use disorders and maybe do some really innovative things around sober housing or peer support or navigation centers, et cetera. So. But, but thank you for those comments. And the only last thing I would leave you with, for those of you who were here way back when, when we first started the CCBHC demonstration project, we had planned 29 positions. If these special requests are approved, we would have 19 positions funded through the expansion grant, and we would add 10 positions funded through CCBHC PPS, which would get us right back to what we had originally planned with this revenue. So it's really just asking that we trust the revenue will be available to us, that there's a true commitment and evidence, and that we proceed as we had planned when we first started down this path. So.
I want to make time for my colleague Nahad. Okay.
Good job. Great job.
Thanks. Do we have the, could we launch the PowerPoint one more time? Great. Let's see if we can get through. Okay, so public health services. I want to pause really quickly. It's 11:30. We will obviously do our best to end at noon. We have the room until 12:30. Thank you, Sharon. And I wanted to just check in to see if there would be willingness to stay if we went over.
I'm good.
Any hard stop?
Let me check here real quick.
I would love to hard stop at 12:15. I got to feed my kid lunch.
Okay.
I have a noon hard stop.
Good to know. Okay. With, in?
Yeah, I could go to 12:15.
12:15. Thank you very much, if needed. So. We're here all week. Public health, this is how it is organized, in three sections for three managers. Community health, healthy people and families, public health advancement, and protections. Financially speaking, fiscal year '22's requested budget is 13.99, or nearly 14 million, which is a decrease of 11% from fiscal year '21's revised budget. That primarily is related to COVID funding. And as we said earlier in the presentation, we do anticipate this going up. So you'll see this nearly level or increased. Biggest things to note, beginning working capital at 2 point, nearly $2.8 million. Federal grants and payments, a decrease of $159,000, which is primarily related to the end of Justice for Families grant and moving one grant into a state line item. So shifting of the categories there. State grants and payments going down again. COVID-related grant funding through OHA. Local grants, that's going down by a million because we received COVID funding from Central Oregon Health Council in fiscal year '21. And then the TRT transfers in, we talked about that earlier in the meeting. Personnel increasing by 3%.
Can I back to the TRT?
Sure.
Was that for the restaurant inspectors?
That was for environmental health, yeah, restaurants.
And that was a one-time? I thought we were taking it on.
So in the requested budget, we have ongoing TRT funding equal to what was previously funded by county general funds.
Okay.
And an increase, a requested increase of $27,000 to maintain current services. Does that make sense?
So the 296 maintains current services?
Yes, it maintains current services, and it includes a rate increase of 1.4%.
And so the reduction of 109,000, what did we lose?
Last year, the Budget Committee approved a one-time $137,000 increase to offset fees that were not going to be increased. So we kept those flat.
Now?
So this is, remember, this is a revised budget proposed.
So with this budget, with the reduction 109, we're not cutting the program, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That's all I was curious.
As I say, when I'm looking at this, this is revised budget. It changed pretty drastically because there were some choices about COVID during this fiscal year.
Okay.
So, yeah, we might want to look, you know, if it comes down to something, we might want to look at the last couple of years instead of just this revised.
Yeah, because I thought that the logic of using TRT funds made a lot of sense with the impact of tourism on the inspectors. I just didn't want to backtrack on that.
And I mean, you know, since we're already talking about that specific piece, you know, moving forward, our restaurants, they definitely, they've had a hard year. And they're going to continue to have some hard time, you know, in this, you know, in this coming year, I believe. And I think it would be great to, you know, if we could, you know, if we could agree on another way to cover our costs in environmental health to provide a high level of service without doing the 1.4% increase or, you know, or to provide, you know, more fee relief to restaurants.
And you have sufficient TRT money.
I mean, yeah, so TRT would be one place. And we're going to get a large chunk of American Rescue Plan dollars very soon. And I mean, this, to me, seems like a very appropriate COVID response, COVID recovery expenditure to tag to those dollars as well.
We can help Kathy Degree pay her fine. I'm just kidding.
Well.
Sorry.
I don't know about that.
I'm just kidding.
We do have some special requests specifically around this topic that hopefully we can dive into a bit more. Very quickly, fiscal knowns, OHA COVID funding, as I mentioned. We anticipate another $2.9 million coming. Reproductive health, we received knowledge that the rates are going to increase, which will bring in an additional $25,000 in revenue in addition to what's in the requested budget, so that's great news. Family Connects Program revenue, this is a new program. We do not know how much it's going to bring in, but we anticipate launching this in fiscal year '22. We'll use that as a baseline. Unknown is the tobacco retail licensure and the impacts on the workload associated with that, specifically environmental health as well as funding. And then public health modernization. That's a discussion at the legislature this year, which may bring additional funds. There are six special requests in front of you, which Nahad will walk through. Overall impacts, 8.1 FTE. Some of those are concurrent positions in the fiscal year '21 budget. Overall cost to the budget would be an additional $942,741, and we are requesting $459,168 in funds from the county to support these six requests.
That's part of the 701?
Yes, part of the 701.
So Family Connects Program revenue, you said that's a new program. Is that going to be discussed at all, or can you want to explain what that is?
Go ahead.
The Family Connects Program?
It says it's a, or it's a known Family Connect Program revenue. So what is that?
So the Family Connects Program is an initiative, correct me if I'm wrong here, to connect with every single pregnant woman in the county.
Yes.
Okay. And we will be able to start charging for those services. That revenue is still in, or that case rate, so to speak, is still in conversation. So we haven't, from our knowledge, settled on what the reimbursement rate for that is going to be.
A state program?
State program.
And fiscal year '22, Commissioner, it's really going to be more of a pilot approach. And then it'll be expanded following the results and lessons learned.
Thank you.
So can we delaunch the presentation for a second and go back to the Zoom? And I don't know if my colleagues here from public health could turn their cameras on.
I thought you were asking if Eric was here.
So if they can, I just want to acknowledge quickly my colleagues here from public health who have been on this call, I think, since eight o'clock, and they have really helped with the preparations of this presentations and presentation and as well as equipping me with information and stories and results and outcomes that I could hopefully present to you today. My, I think, biggest fear today is that I don't do an adequate job of capturing their voices, their passion, their dedication to their work. And with, I realize we're short on time, and that makes me a little bit nervous because there's a lot of effort, especially from this team that has been put into this presentation to help answer perhaps some questions in advance of getting to them and beyond. So if, we can now go back to the, thank you, everyone? Okay. Okay, so as you know, the future is inevitable. And the question that I ask myself every day is, what is my role in the future? Will I be a bystander, or will I help shape it? Today's public health presentation is based on the premise that we have some control over shaping our future. The proposed policy decisions are aimed at building stability, resilience, and expertise in our department so that we can better serve our Dushut residents, our youth, our most vulnerable, our businesses, and our partners. I did neglect to mention one other colleague who's sitting in the back there. I think that's what you were mentioning. I couldn't see very well. Eric Moni, who's going to join me in a few minutes. Thank you. So what is the goal or focus of public health? Our collective aim in public health is to maximize population health through an equity lens. So sometimes there are trade-offs in that individual gains are sacrificed to achieve societal goals. And we have all experienced individual sacrifices for a collective good during COVID. On the right, you see the key functions of public health, which are policy development, assessment, and assurance. And the smaller fonts include the essential services that public health departments are expected to render. Given the recent history of emerging public health threats, we have been fortunate that since 2018, Oregon started with very humble investments in modernizing public health and later on in emergency preparedness. I don't think any of us could imagine how we could have responded in those early days of the pandemic if we didn't have key positions in place, such as an epidemiologist, emergency preparedness coordinator, infection prevention nurse for long-term care facilities, Carrie Ko, whom you know very well. However, moving on to the next slide, the fact is that Oregon, compared to our cousins in the Northwest region, remains one of the states to invest inadequately in public health, public health infrastructure. In public health, we continue to work from a position of deficit, and COVID-19 really exposed our vulnerabilities. So what has been the impact of COVID on our communities and our department? First of all, in 2020, COVID-19 was the third-leading cause of death nationally. Second, locally in Dushut County, we have had over 6,800 reported cases, over 70 deaths, over 200 ever hospitalized. And we can assume that around 10% of the known cases, and even those who are not, who haven't been diagnosed or confirmed, could have long-term physio neurological requirements. It is also important to acknowledge that although this virus does not discriminate, some groups have been disproportionately impacted. During COVID, we also saw a strong interdependence of public health and our economy, as Dr. Conway mentioned. And we learned the hard way that when we shortchange public health, we pay a high price. Our economy sank, and we saw the highest unemployment rates in our county that we had seen in decades. With that, of course, more people needed help during these difficult times, which is reflected in the slide to the right, which shows a greater than 20% increase in OHP or Medicaid enrollment. This is, in fact, the reason that despite all the challenges, demand for our department's public health clinical services did not significantly drop. This past year, COVID also contributed to increasing high-risk behaviors, such as increasing alcohol and cannabis sales. And the impact of COVID on our youth has been tremendous. From a survey in Oregon, more than 54% of our youth are struggling with mental health. One in five is struggling with food security. 15% with access to health care. We are seeing STDs and substance use on the rise, and immunization rates are going down. We are reaching the youth after health tragedies and problem behaviors occur. And now is the time to invest in our youth and put them in a position to make healthy choices and decisions for years to come. And with that, I would like to present the first policy decision for your consideration and discussion. And I'll have to divert a bit to provide some context in anticipation of some questions that you may have. But please feel free to ask more questions. The Youth Success Partnership Program is a new initiative to establish a health promotion and prevention program in Bend-Lepine School District to serve more than 18,000 students per year, which is around 10% of our county's population. This initiative recognizes the fact that we, as public health professionals and experts, are reaching our youth when it's too late. In fact, drugs, tobacco, vaping, alcohol, teen pregnancy, unsafe sex, STDs are reaching them before we do. For example, and I know Mike will appreciate these facts, 30% of 11th graders report using e-cigarettes. 19% report binge drinking. 21% report marijuana use. 30% of chlamydia cases since 2011 are among 19 years and younger. We had 25 teen pregnancies last year. Immunization rates among youth have dropped, and behind these figures are often hopeless youth and distraught families. And these are the facts. Which is why we are coming to you today to ask for around $20 investment in contacts with our youth for the next three years to help establish a health promotion and prevention program in our Bend-Lepine School District to help fill a gaping capacity hole. This program would place public health specialists trained by health services in school clusters, and their sole focus would be on increasing youth and parental knowledge and engagement in curbing high-risk behaviors. In addition to making a difference in the lives and health of our youth, we get the added benefit of community cost savings, as indicated on the left side. For every substance use treatment we avert, we save almost $28,000 in cost of treatment. For every suicide we prevent, we save $60,000 in hospital care, physician, and clinical services. For every teen pregnancy we avoid, we save $16,000 in medical costs. And a fair question would be, how do we ensure that we get a return on our investment? An initial statistically valid survey will be conducted in the schools to establish a baseline against which we will measure ourselves every year. Evaluation will be part of the program design from day one. We will, of course, do all of this in partnership with Bend-Lepine School District, which believes so much in this innovative approach that they're willing to double the investment. This program will bring two agencies with two different missions to focus on the most important assets in our communities, and that's our youth. Without this investment, I'm afraid, that we will continue to see increasing numbers in substance use, teen pregnancy, suicide risk, and other harmful behaviors. My hope is that 10 years from now, we don't look back and wonder what if we had done a little bit more for our youth. So that's the first policy decision. Any comments, questions?
Nahad, actually, I was looking at my notes from the other day. So you're saying the cost is really $161,600 for the first year? And then you had said 320 and 320, but it's actually 259, and then the final year is 385,000? Because it comes to 800,000, correct? And that's the correct allocation, okay.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think the initial conversation we had, we were still wondering how to incorporate the indirect cost, and I think that's something that still needs to be resolved.
Okay, all right, because I was just comparing with my notes, and I.
Sure.
Okay.
Follow-up, Nat and Nahad, our contribution goes from 161 to 385, and the school districts goes from something to zero, right?
It's a one-to-one match, so they would be putting forth the same amount as we would.
It's the same amount.
Okay, so in '24, the schools are committed to 385,000?
They work on a biennial.
Just want to get on the record, the schools are committed.
Yeah, so for the duration of this initiative, which is three years, we are working together to ensure that we are providing matching funds for this initiative.
Okay, that's great.
Yes.
I didn't know they were going to make that commitment.
Yeah, is there conversation with the other districts in the county?
We hope, actually, this is a platform for expanding it to the entire county.
That was my question the other day. I said, why are we just doing Bend-Lepine? Honestly, these kids have been so short-changed. Talking to Mike McIntosh, they're probably impacted for the rest of their lives, but at least for a good 10 years.
Yeah, we are, I can assure you that we want every youth to benefit from this program. And of course, that means incorporating Redmond and Sisters into this. So far, we have an initial commitment from our colleagues in Bend-Lepine. And we're hoping that once we proceed with enrolling this program and demonstrating results, we can also receive similar commitments from our colleagues at Redmond and Sisters.
Nahad, I'm very appreciative of setting that baseline and having a good evaluation. To me, that was one of the issues we had last year, which we didn't get some answers to. But I like to come back, or whoever's on this committee, to say, yeah, we were shooting for here, and it's even performed better.
Absolutely.
And to me, that's extremely important. I appreciate it. And happy birthday to your two girls tomorrow.
To my twins tomorrow, yes. Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Your twins, yes.
Yeah. Shall I move on to the next policy decision? Excellent, which actually, there's a great segue. Because the second policy decision is about an existing substance abuse prevention program in Lepine and Sister communities. This prevention program focuses on youth marijuana, alcohol, and tobacco use. And again, it is set up to help reach our youth before it's too late, as youth are significantly more likely to become substance-dependent. more likely to become substance-dependent in adulthood if they begin in adolescence. As the chart on the left indicates, for several years prior to this program being established, we had seen high and increasing number of students violating school drug and tobacco use policy in K through 12. Now, I'm not sure how much you're aware of this, for me, this was new knowledge. So generally, when a youth violates school policy on substance use, they get suspended and not necessarily educated on the harms of substance use. Frankly, to me at least, this is an outdated model. Instead, our program helps the schools set up alternatives to out-of-school suspension so that our youth learn about the dangers of substance use and are equipped with knowledge and confidence to make better choices in life. But does it really work? Well, our program data show that for each youth enrolled in this program, they save 18 hours of classroom time, and of the 39 students enrolled in our program in one of the schools, only three had repeat violations, and that's remarkable. We believe this program is critical for the success of our youth and communities, and we believe it is not going away anytime soon. Therefore, our ask is to convert the limited-duration position occupied by one of the best committee health specialists, Lindy Peddie, to regular status and provide minimal funding for materials and services, particularly an evaluation. Converting to regular position brings stability to the position, as it is difficult to keep great talents in limited-duration positions. It also ensures long-term, sustainable solutions in Lupine and Sister communities. And without this position and program, we lose continuity just when it is about to pay huge dividends. And importantly, the communities of Sisters and Lupine are left with minimal to no engagement for substance abuse prevention efforts. And of course, it makes economic sense as well, which I alluded to this in the previous slide. Any comments or questions?
What's an MJ tax?
I couldn't hear you.
MJ tax?
Marijuana tax.
Marijuana tax, thank you.
So, status-wise, you know, what happened this last year, I guess I don't have a feel for it, I think we talked about this just a little bit, and it's probably more of a relationship for the service with the schools being shut down, and, you know, we're basically going to have to get re-engaged with, you know, now the kids are in school. Any thoughts on that? I mean, what happened this last year?
So in 2020, Lindy spent a lot of her time actually sending the foundation in Sisters to make sure the program comes on board, and now we have the foundation in place for 2021, in fact, to roll out this program.
Thank you.
I remember one of the saddest things I saw was Lindy had a notice on the wall at Sisters Coffee, but it was after COVID, so I knew that, you know, she was trying to reach out to some people.
Absolutely.
And I knew it wasn't going to happen.
There's a lot of training that goes into this, and also policy development, protocols, because again, it's a program that looks at alternatives to suspension. So setting up the internal mechanism and systems to address this issue is part of the foundation. So for this kind of program, I would say that if we look at it after a year, we might not see results because we're just setting the foundation, but after two years, we should be able to speak to results. No other questions?
Nahad, when you say drug and tobacco, the drug component of that, that does include alcohol?
No, alcohol is separate, we, that's a, yeah, there is a separate metric for that, yeah. Okay, so if I may, just to respect everyone's time, and, okay, this is a slide that tries to capture the impact of COVID on our department and public health services, and already Janice has alluded to a lot of these, so I am probably not going to go bullet by bullet. I do want to highlight two important points here. One is that during the course of this pandemic, public health deployed around 2/3 of its staff to the response, which meant that there were a lot of unsung heroes who remained behind and wore multiple hats, one of whom is sitting back there, to try to make sure that we could still maintain services. So that's one important point. The other is that, again, despite the challenges that our community members were facing, the demand for our public health services, clinical services especially, did not drop significantly, and that's really remarkable. And with that, it takes me to our third policy ask pertaining to reproductive health clinical services. As indicated in the graph to the left, the number of our reproductive health clients started increasing in May of last year and was, in fact, on a trajectory to surpass last year's numbers. And in fact, it did in October. However, towards the end of 2020, we had to pull out a few clinicians to help with the vaccination rollout, so we couldn't see as many clients as we wanted to. Currently, I am on policy decision number 10, and I was told that the higher the number, the more important it is, Mike, so.
Okay, I got you, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So obviously, somebody played a joke on me. Currently, we only have, and this is, and I hope I do justice to capturing this, currently we only have two front desk staff, and neither one speaks Spanish. So we are repeatedly faced with two general scenarios, and we have one clinic in Redmond, one clinic in Bend, by the way, and we are repeatedly faced with two general scenarios. In one scenario, we have to pull our Spanish-speaking medical assistant from doing her regular work to provide translation services for around 25% to 30% of our clientele who require language access or translation. And in another scenario, we have to pull our medical assistant to actually replace our front desk staff for extended periods because they're unavailable, they're on leave or sick or what have you. These scenarios result in rescheduling our patients and reducing our services because the medical assistant is no longer able to help with the turnover of rooms, cleaning and preparing them for the next patient, or processing lab specimens. Instead, our high-paid OB-GYN or nurse practitioners would have to do that work, which results in seeing less patients, less revenues, and dissatisfied committee members. Therefore, we are asking for a part-time admin support tech to help address our lack of human resource capacity in processing clients. We believe the impact of this part-time position is a fiscally-minded staffing model without which we will have unreliable front desk coverage, client dissatisfaction due to rescheduling, and a decrease, in fact, in revenue due to cancellation. Every day that this happens in our clinics where somebody doesn't show up or we need to pull the MA, we lose up to $1,000 in revenues.
Would this person be bilingual, like the other one showed up?
That would be our preference, Mike, given that we have a 25% to 30% clientele reflecting that demography.
And you would think that just the fact that you had the bilingual service and support that those numbers could even go up, once that community knows more.
Exactly, good point, I didn't consider that, good point.
And the bulk of the people being served are OHP clients.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, if no other questions, I'll go to the next slide. Our fourth policy decision, which is related to our public health services, for your kind consideration, is perinatal care coordination. And even though I'm not supposed to have favorites, frankly, this is one of my favorites because it's simple yet powerful, and not only we have data which show our services make a difference, but also we can start billing for this service soon and generate revenues. So here's a bit of context. Evidence tells us that pregnant women who access and receive relevant services prior to and after delivery have better pregnancy and health outcomes than otherwise. Evidence also shows that women who participate in WIC, Women, Infants, and Children, are 17% less likely to develop high blood pressure, which is a risk factor for pregnancy outcomes. Last but not least, evidence shows that women who participate in Nurse Family Support Services, which is going to be now somehow transformed into Family Connects, as you may have heard earlier, deliver 18% fewer preterm births. Now, a reasonable question would be, are there pregnant women out there who receive no care prior to or after delivery and still have good pregnancy outcomes? The answer is yes, just like there are people out there who eat fast food every day and don't develop heart disease. But to me, it's like Russian roulette, and I wouldn't take my chances, especially when we are so fortunate to live in a county which is rich with protective resources. But, and yes, there's always a but, many committee members don't know about the resources or need a bit of nudge to access these resources and benefit from them. And that's where perinatal care coordination or PCC program comes in. Perinatal, by the way, in case you were wondering, refers to continuum of care from conceiving a child to post-delivery. Our PCC program helps connect clients to resources such as primary care, dental care, by the way, mostly through private providers, and other services such as enrolling clients in insurance programs or in WIC or parenting classes, which I definitely could have benefited from, or mental health services. And this last point around mental health services is really critical because data suggests that 1 in 7 women experience perinatal mood anxiety disorder, which is even more common than hypertension and diabetes during pregnancy, but only 40% get diagnosed, and of those, only 60% seek treatment. So women who enroll in our PCC program get screened and referred to relevant services, including mental health services, and they consistently show better utilization and health outcome than those who are not in our program, as you can kindly see in the box to the left bottom. However, because of our staffing capacity, we can only reach 1,000 pregnant women out of 1,800 in Deshute County. Our ask for this year is for one FTE Health Educator II position to help increase contact for additional 500 women, which would increase our PCC coverage to 85% of pregnant women throughout the county. And I want to dispel any myth around who we are reaching. We are reaching everyone regardless of their income, insurance, race, where they live, or their allegiance to the ducks or beavers.
Would that new person be bilingual? How about Hope?
We have some capacity in our PCC program for that. Certainly, we will have an open competition and to capture or recruit the best candidate out there.
That's actually what I had said about 10, you're asking for half a person, and I would think that if you can't get a half a person within like two months, if we do push that one through, that you need to double it. I mean, asking for half a person in today's economy, most people are going to want to get their $300 a week on unemployment, and you're going to have to make it competitive.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, we.
We had that discussion, and you were like, oh, no, 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 I don't need a whole person, but I'm like, well, if you want that position filled, you may need a whole person.
Yeah. Yeah, we have, what you're seeing in front of you has already gone through a prioritization within public health. We had 20-plus special requests. We went through, and we want to be good custodians of our taxpayers' money and our resources. So what you see is already been prioritized, and we are coming to you transparent about our needs. So at this point, we identified half a part-time need. However, I think, Commissioner, there, to your point, just like the health officer position, it is difficult to recruit for part-time right now. So having this person certainly can provide support to the rest of the department. Okay? Any questions on this policy ask? I'm going to skip the without part for the sake of time. Any comments or questions?
So I am curious, Nahad, about the effort to contact people. Is there, I mean, there are going to be people, there are going to be pregnant women who have access to, you know, very good, geez, I'm forgetting what the doctor who works with you, you know, the medical.
OB-GYN?
Yeah, or, you know, more specific than that, but, you know, someone who, you know, a medical professional who's working with you through your pregnancy, who can give you lots of good advice. So there may be, there may be people who have access to good medical advice who don't necessarily need the contact. I mean, like, how much are we, like, I was just a little concerned that maybe we'd be pushing the services for people who, you know, I'm covered, I've got, you know, I've got good advice elsewhere, not needed.
Yeah, good, fair question. I asked the same question myself. First of all, participating in this program is voluntary. We have yet to come across anyone that we offered the services to, and they have turned us away. There's a menu of options, menu of services, that it's often what we see, at least one of those or two of those is relevant to that person, but they don't have to obviously participate, and that's why we're saying 85%, because we're also accounting for 15% who may not need the services. So thank you for that. Yes, Mike?
Earlier on in the program, you stated that, or it's been stated, that we have gaping holes in public health. Okay, what are those holes specifically? And if you guys were allocated, let's say, 350K, where would it go?
At the last part, Mike, I couldn't hear, I'm sorry, I heard the gaping part, but not the.
The ask is for 700,000, let's say you got half of it, where would it go and would have plugged the holes?
Yeah. So generally speaking, the gaping holes that we are referring to have to do with quantity and quality of staffing and expertise, generally speaking, in terms of our public health services. And I think your timing, it couldn't be better because we're going to go into a program where that gaping hole is going to be quite evident. Would you allow me another minute or two?
Sure.
Thank you. So now let's spend a few minutes, thanks Eric, let's spend a few minutes talking about the team that needs little introductions and has been the bedrock of Deshute County's efforts in assuring a business-friendly environment. I imagine when most people outside of this room think of environmental health, they often think of restaurant inspections, but what environmental health does goes well beyond supporting restaurants. Our support ranges from pool and lodging to even establishments that are not technically under our purview, such as schools, childcare centers, residential long-term cares, and retails. Now, the table on the left shows that despite this pandemic, our economy is showing resilience, and our total fee collection coming in through license renewals or new licenses has almost remained the same as last year. So how is that possible? Well, part of the story, in my view, is that our environmental health team repurposed itself and adapted to a new reality and started supporting businesses through virtual platform and electronic communications. We created a business liaison position and responded to thousands of questions, complaints, and suggestions. We were the equivalent of therapists for businesses. On top of that, we faced wildfires and a week or two of toxic air and smoke fire. During that time, we saw that the business committee, schools, nursing homes, and other entities were turning to us for technical assistance on how to deal with unsafe air quality and smoke, and how to improve indoor air ventilation and air quality to avoid airborne transmission. However, our team was not in a position to provide technical capacity to our businesses and schools and long-term care facilities and others to address indoor air quality and ventilation and fire smoke. You might ask, what about OSHA or DEQ? Well, they are underfunded, undercapacitated, and don't have the technical capacity to provide air quality assistance and training either. Which brings me to our fifth policy decision, which has four parts to it, and I ask that you bear with me. Our environmental health team has been functioning from a position of deficit, from a position of deficit for years, and this is part of the gaping hole, and that's a fact. As the graph on the left shows, an inspection ratio of around 550 per staff is not acceptable. The FDA standard is around 280 to 320 per staff. So our first ask is to convert one limited-duration EH2, that's Environmental Health Specialist II, to a regular status as an Environmental Health Specialist II to continue with inspections. Currently, it's limited duration, and we're asking that it becomes regular. Our second ask is to maintain a reclassified Environmental Health Specialist III as the same class of three, because we believe that moving forward, it is critical to maintain this capacity, business liaison, which Emily Freeland has held. Our third ask is a new, and this is a new position, Environmental Health Specialist II position, which can help not only with inspections and reduce inspection ratio, but importantly, would bring expertise in air quality, smoke, wildfire, HVACs, which has become a huge demand from our businesses. Without these three humble asks, first, we will continue with suboptimal inspection ratio and inspection. ratio and inspection quality and face potential risk of outbreaks; and second, potentially put not only 200,000 Deschute County residents, but also four and a half million visitors at risk and hurt our economy and businesses; and third, we will have difficulty in recruiting and keeping high-performing employees such as Emily. There is one more ask, which is related to the CPI, but I'm going to pause here and see if you have any questions. And Eric is here because he's the expert. He's the one that deals with this program day in, day out. And if you have any questions for him and how he deals with the deficit about the air quality, please feel free to ask.
So a quick question. Truly, switch to a consulting mode and other areas. So as I say, I think of restaurant inspections as kind of the back of the house, food safety. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, kind of the blossom? What do people ask about, you know, a restaurant owner that you haven't done in the past?
Well, a restaurant owner, in the, in the thousands of questions we've been asked since March of 2020, can restaurants or can, can our restrooms be used by customers if we're dine-in or if we're takeout only? Should I wash my tomatoes in bleach water? Okay, so I shut my dining room down, but can I keep my drive-through open? And working through the complexities of OHA guidance that shifts from phase one to phase two to extreme, high, low, moderate, helping them what the new normal is, you know, from week to week, has been overwhelming. But we're up for the challenge, man. We, they ask us the questions, and we answer them. But it's not just restaurants. I mean, it's like all businesses have been asking for guidance through this, businesses that we license as well as businesses that we don't license, from gyms, community organizations, event promoters, Home Depot, other box stores, mom-and-pop businesses, saying, how many people can I have in my business? How do I clean my bathroom? And so it really goes beyond just food pool and lodging.
Yeah, thank you. I'd be curious, so these types of businesses, restaurants, and, you know, the other types of businesses that you, that you work with, I am sure that the numbers over, you know, if you looked at kind of over a very long period, you know, that the numbers have increased dramatically, 10, 15 years. I'm curious, kind of, if you can give me a sense of, you know, how the number of businesses served has changed and how, how, how many or how few staff you've added over that same time period? Like, you know, this is a, this is a use, this is a very useful graph, but like, if it could go even back a little farther and as, as opposed to just showing, you know, how many, how many inspections you're doing, give us a sense of how many people you've, you know, how many people you've been doing that with and how that's changed over time as the demand has increased.
Well, and thank you for that, Commissioner. The slide that shows the graph, I just want to point out, those are just food service inspections, and we have four and a half FTE to do food service inspections. And realistically, on paper, if I did the math, we should have about eight just food service inspectors for Deschutes County. We're responsible for about 2,650 food service inspections, and that includes food trucks, caterers, school lunch inspections. And so, you know, the, heaped on top of the food service inspections, these inspectors are also required to inspect those childcares, respond to animal bites, and deal with animal control vets and humane societies. If somebody brings a bat, live bat in that says it bit my son on the foot when I was staying at Blackbeak Ranch, we follow up on that, and we take care of that. Tobacco retail licensing could add some pressure. The Oregon Health Authority said this year, you have to inspect campgrounds on federal land that's inspected by private companies or that are managed by private companies. So that'll add another 75 inspections to the workload in 2021. So, yeah, a fast inspector is not a thorough inspector. And so, you know, we, but we have contractual statutory obligations that we have to do these restaurant inspections and all the pools and the food trucks and the hotels, they have to be inspected. And, and they deserve that. These, these facilities are paying us good money, and they deserve a good, a good service in return.
Any other clarification? And we are, go ahead, Mike.
What's a food truck? They're, they're not listing the fee here.
On the table.
We have 205 mobile food trucks, according to.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I mean, you have 15-seat or 16 to 50 or on the fee schedule you have? What are they considering?
This is, this, these numbers that you're looking at are specifically for restaurants only. We could have a different table for mobile food units that are class one, class two, class three, or class four. So, yeah, this was just taking one example of one type of license.
What's on average of a taco truck?
350.
350?
Yeah.
And that's comparable statewide, probably?
Comparable to what?
The rest of the state, as you made the comparisons here, the other counties. I just wondered.
We're fourth or fifth on rates with mobile food units, yeah.
Thank you.
And we are asking, because I haven't heard any questions on this, which makes me think that you, you also see the need. We are asking for a new position who would be basically a hybrid of an inspector and an air quality specialist, because there is huge demand, especially, I mean, post-COVID, still, we're going to have fires, I think, right? We're still going to deal with some smoke, and there is huge demand for that service that we don't have necessarily in Deschute County. And what really happens is that businesses go on their own and have to hire contractors, pay a lot of money, and it's really inefficient. And it goes contrary to our business-friendly environment sort of vision that we have. So this is a position that really fills a gaping hole in terms of our capacity and service for our community.
Air quality is only increasing in importance, whether it's wildfires or, or obviously during the pandemic aerosol transmission of viruses in indoor air environments. And we're not asking that we become mechanical engineers or industrial hygienists or HVAC contractors, but we have to provide a level of service with regard to wildfire and indoor air quality instead of just saying, hire a $2,000 mechanical contractor to help with your childcare or your nursing home. We have to be able to become the air quality, not experts, but at least a resource for our county in that regard.
And I know 12:15 is my deadline. I do need to, I go through a couple of more slides if you allow me, Eric, then. So this one is really around, you know, I was surprised, when I look at a fee, a fee structure for public health services, I saw that every single clinical service we provide or any service we provide has a built-in inflation adjustment index in it, with the exception of environmental health, which I couldn't quite grasp. So for your kind consideration, we're proposing that we also apply a CPI to our environmental health fees as an adjustment, as an annual adjustment. We can, perhaps this year, because of the recovery funds and what have you, waive it. However, building that culture in right now, I think, is really critical. So at minimum, we can adjust with inflation. And within 10 years or so, it actually builds up to a big increase in fees, frankly. But at least it's, it's something that is somehow accommodating the reality, economic realities that we face. So that's one, the part four of the policy decision. And if there are no questions there, and Greg, my, my understanding is that, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot, we have discussed this also, also with your good self, and I think in general, you're receptive to the idea. Of course, I don't want to put you on the stabat, but it makes economic sense for us to consider some inflationary adjustment in our services.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that, you know, there's two factors that affect all that. One is utilization, one is inflation. So as the costs of the, providing the service increase through either increased numbers or through CPI, that we would adjust the fees, or the fees, it would make sense to adjust the fees that would reflect that.
Yeah, CPI would be defensible and incremental.
Right.
Opposed to nothing, and then a big hit.
Exactly. And it's predictable, too, to the businesses. That's what they're telling us. They know there are going to be fee increases. At least make it predictable. That's what we're hearing from them.
I also think it makes more sense to do little bits at a time versus trying to take a big chunk off every X number of years.
Right. I don't know if Janice, you want to switch or not? Okay, my last two slides, my sincere apologies. I was asked to say a few words about sort of the future of public health, and I'll try to be as, as quick as, as I can be. And I think we've talked already about a resilient department, which can be agile and elastic. We have talked about our core staffing deficits and, and the necessary expertise and skillset that we require, thanks, Eric, that we require, and one that really, a department that really reflects our community's demographics. Now, the next bullet is around, as we enter a recovery or rebuilding phase of this response, we really must do so both in an efficient way and equitable way. Some committee groups suffered more than others, had less access to services, whether healthcare or childcare, and they were deemed, some people were deemed essential, but I'm not sure if we did a great job of protecting them. So really, we must learn and rebuild better during this recovery phase. There's no doubt in my mind that sucks, that our success will go as far as our communities' trust, and George alluded to this earlier. And we must not take our communities for granted and ensure, we must ensure that we have timely, accurate information for them so that they can make informed decisions. Now, the last two bullet points I'd like to go through quickly. Health in our policies. You know, we have a transportation policy, we have an economic development policy, we have a building policy, right? Really, what health has shown us and health outcomes have shown us is that these different social determinants impact the outcomes in health. A person living in a crowded space, in a built environment that doesn't allow for them to have physical movement or activity or creates stress on them, all of these factors go into health outcomes. So it makes sense that when we're developing our economic development policies or building policies or transportation especially, we factor in the health into that, we factor in health into that decision-making and policymaking. And that's part of really health in our policies and counting, accounting for the social determinants of health. And last but not least, I think we would be, I would be naive to think that we are not going to have a next outbreak, crisis, pandemic, and I hope that we don't let this crisis go to waste. I hope that we learn from it and build resilience in our departments, in our services, in our community for the, what I consider to be the inevitable. Which takes me to my final policy decision. Up until last fall, my position as Director of Public Health did not have an admin assistant for a variety of, I'm sure, good reasons. The board was generous to allow for an admin assistant, a limited duration, to be recruited for this position. And I can tell you that since the addition of this staff member, I have had to worry less about going to meetings, taking notes, tracking activities, following up, scheduling, so on. These are really important tasks that I haven't had to worry as much about, and instead, I've been hopefully providing some service to our community and to your good selves. I'm asking for this position of admin assistant, which is currently limited duration, to become regular because it's really a core organizational capacity for our division. And by the way, this person provides services for a depleted division in terms of admin, as Cheryl mentioned. So this person's providing services for all of our programs because we don't have assistants sitting left and right. We have to pool our, our support team to provide services. Tom, did you raise your hand? No? Did you want to support this?
No.
I just, yeah, I know. It's okay. Any questions, comments? I know you got to go, Commissioner. Please, go ahead.
If you hired all these new people, 18 of them, do you have any space for them?
Oh, good question. I'll leave Cheryl and the Commissioners to respond to that important question.
There are lots of plans underway for space, and we hope that telehealth affords some ability to breathe into space as it grows, because we may not get space as quickly as we need it, so we may need to be creative and flexible.
And the, how many people are not filled? How many positions currently are not filled? Usually, health has quite a few.
We have about 26 positions that are currently vacant.
That's what I'm talking about.
What do you mean?
They, you know, we were looking for a half a position for that doctor for how many months? Five, six months? So it's never, did get filled. I mean, there's a lot of positions.
Sure, and they've already calculated that in their budget.
Yeah, we're looking for the psychiatrist, and we have never filled that. You know, there's a lot of positions that are allocated. And we do have a lot of turnover.
Yeah, can I just say, on, on behalf of public health, because I think, Mike Meyer, your question was really important. You asked again about the gaping holes, and what I can tell you is that behavioral health has a lot of levers for revenue because we bill for services. We're kind of set up like clinics. Public health does not have that luxury and yet has to provide an enormous amount of required services. And maybe I'm already telling you things that you know, but I think that has really done harm to the public health array over the last couple of decades. They've had little, sort of small grant streams that they have to spend a lot of energy on and not a, a large way to generate revenue, the way that we've had in the behavioral health arena. And I think that has resulted in true gaping holes, and the pandemic shed a big light on it, but we've been observing it for four or five years at least.
And here shows in the priority stuff there, where almost the majority of your money is non-general fund.
Correct.
Where you don't have that luxury, to say.
That's absolutely right.
Yeah, since 2010, Mike and colleagues, public health in the U.S. has lost 20% of its workforce.
Of its workforce or?
Workforce. 20% of its workforce. And that leaves us with capacity in terms of, of course, quantity of staff and expertise, key expertise. So that factors into this gaping hole that we are.
But that doesn't play out to Deschutes County. We have not lost 20% of our workforce.
No. No, we've been fortunate.
So we're doing a lot better than everybody else. They must have a lot of gaping holes.
Yeah. We've been fortunate because of the, perhaps, the foresight of this committee in years past and maybe Oregon's investment in modernization. We've been fortunate to have buy-in from our elected officials and very powerful people in Oregon in terms of public health. Nevertheless, I think Oregon still remains one of the states, at least in the Northwest region, where it's not really, I mean, Idaho's investing $80 to $100 per capita in public health.
Yeah, but you got to live in Idaho.
You got to live there. Okay, no comment. No comment.
So we do need to get going. Do you want to do your summary real quick? I saw you had the last slide there.
Oh, that, that's quite all right. I think just in summary, I was discussing the special requests. The impact is an additional 18.2 FTE above requested, as well as, I can't remember from memory, just two of the key policy decisions that are in for, in front of you, the CCBHC PPS ongoing revenue question, which would add an additional 18 FTE in addition to the special requests. And then around the CPI for environmental health, so the CPI strategy.
The only thing, you made a comment earlier about the priority. I got the impression that really wasn't the priorities that you wanted.
CPI?
The priority in those.
It's just a really hard question because at this point where we are is what we would say to you, really transparently, is they're all priorities. I mean, we, we, we have to whittle down what we ask for to, to kind of cover the barebones of what we've identified that we need, and I think Nahad described that really well. People come to us and say, we need, 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 and we have to really think strategically about what we ask for. So then, when we have to prioritize, it's difficult, and. So then, when we have to prioritize, it's difficult, and our work is so different from public health, and their work is so different from ours, asking us to prioritize, in a sense, against each other can really be a struggle, because there's no way for me to say that my number-one priority offer, they really should be side by side, and truth be told, probably even within some of those asks, should you ask us, and I, well, I'm going to stop right there. I'm going to stop right there.
I could add something. So one of the things that we've done this year is that-
George, Mike, Mike was still talking, and then I think George had a comment.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear Mike. I don't hear Mike.
Go ahead, George, he's, he's lagging you on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to point out that, uncharacteristically, we've, we, we have ranked these positions because it was required, but we're hoping that, that are not asking for additional new county general funds this year will be an enticement for this entire list to be taken seriously.
Well, that's not true, because you're asking for seven hundred and one thousand dollars. Isn't that right? Or am I wrong?
I think, I think George is referring to, to meet our current budget, so to balance, we're not asking for additional county general fund, but you're absolutely right. For the special requests, there are county general fund asks.
That's where I'm focusing on, George, is the special request. And I, I think it's important for you guys to say, if we had three hundred and fifty grand, we would put it here. I mean, I, I don't feel qualified, I'm not qualified, to decide specifically what is the best area to put limited monies in your particular budget.
I'm sure it will invoke some very lively discussions internally.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, you can always have the excuse, well, you didn't get your money, because the damn budget committee wouldn't give it to you.
But in a way, there have been comments that they already eliminated a number of requests, right? So the question might be more like, if I had a million and a half, if that we were, you know, and I was only going to do seven fifty, it would be this list.
And in previous years, we've been asked to, to bring it to you in that way, and, and we didn't do that this year. You know, we've, we've, in previous years, said this is, this would be the ideal, and then this would be sort of a, a best case, and this is what we would do, should we have to take reductions. And this year, we're really saying, we've done an internal prioritization, you're absolutely right, and this is where we landed, and our sincere hope is that we've made a good case for each and every one of these.
Yeah, I really like this. The other, the other way seems a little bit like budget manipulation or talking.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks very much, Mr. Anderson. I, I'd just add, and this was the point I was trying to make, about the, the underlying budget, not requesting any additional county general funds. This is not an inflated series of requests that we believe there's any padding, and this is, this is the request that we believe we need to do our job.
Yeah. Great. Appreciate that.
One thing this budget does do, though, for that student success program, is we have to commit to six hundred and fifty thousand for the next two years. So that's not in here, but-
Oh, it's three years.
Right, it's a three-year program, but it's six hundred and fifty for the next, for the next two years. So, anyway, you know.
Two, three years, yeah. Very good.
Just want everyone to be aware.
Thank you very much. This was really long, and it, I, I could feel the attention did not wane. Maybe I was wrong, but it's a lot of detail to keep track of, and we really appreciate that you take it seriously and pay close attention and-
The most exciting stuff in the world, the listening.
Isn't it? We're excited about it. So we really appreciate your time and attention, and understand that half of you are volunteers. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, volunteers.
So then we will adjourn at about twelve thirty-two. This budget committee, one final note is, I'd like some suggestions for censorship of, of our real chair for-
We could make him spend a day with the health department, inspecting, and say, need help, right?
That's a treat.
That would be a treat, he'd get snacks all day long.